And welcome to our December 5th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Could we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chairman Drun. We'll start with you.
Present.
Thank you. Supervisor Royo.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson.
Presente.
Supervisor Bone.
Mary Solstice.
All right. And Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Great. And would you all please join us for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Have a nice day, Mr. America. And to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. And Madam CIO Hayes, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Morning, Chairman Drun. There are no modifications to the agenda today.
Okay. Great. Well, that's going to make this go quickly. The consent calendar, are there any questions, clarifications from the board before we go to public comment on consent? Yeah, I know Supervisor Bone wants to mention something. Go ahead, please.
Well, I think we all might want to in a way.
Yeah, you bet.
But I'd like to recognize the donation from the Margiria family for the McKay track for the equestrian trail, the work on the equestrian trail. As we know, Seth was a very involved in horses. He was a former supervisor and a former planning commissioner for a long time. And I appreciate his wife and his family for making this donation to our McKay Trail.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that. And any other clarification, questions, or announcements from the board on the consent?
None.
Okay. Let's go ahead and go to public comment. We'll start with the Zoom. And we have two people in Zoom, but no hands up. And for those of you participating in the Zoom today, as always, please turn your audio off because there is a delay if you're watching the audio video feed. And of course, it's star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. And we do not have any hands up at this time. And just for a note, we have, we've gone back to three minutes for a public comment today. Our agenda is not as heavy as it's been the last couple of meetings. But please, those in the audience that would like to speak on the consent, please come forward. Let us know which item you're speaking on. Welcome.
Well, I'm going to first speak on item 14, which is what Rex mentioned, that very generous donation was for an amount of $25,000. So hopefully, those of you out there who wish to make, either do your giving while you're living, which is what my grandmother, my wife's grandmother said, or donations after you go, this is greatly appreciated by everybody out there in a wonderful way to be remembered. I also did wish to make a comment on number six. I strongly support what you're moving forward there, which is transfer of contingencies for $35,000, $5,000 for Oric Volunteer Fire Department, $5,000 for a fire study, and $25,000 for Southern Humboldt Business Improvement District. Strongly support those kind of actions being taken by this board. I also wish to make a little comment on items number one and two, both involving our airport out there. And I was mentioning to some of the supervisors earlier that I ran into a flight instructor on my flight coming back here, who did a fantastic job, pushed us right down through the clouds. I don't think anybody else could have done it. He was very proud. But the major thing that came from this was communication with him to plant a seed that maybe we can get a flight instructor school up at Cal Poly. With this new instrumentation we're getting, it should qualify us for this. I hope that some of you supervisors will work together with myself and other people to get this. It will improve our connectivity. We could possibly even have a stewardess school also up there. And so now's a good time to start working on those projects. He thought we had a flight school up here. He's not from this general vicinity, but then when he checked, he said, oh, it's over in Reading. So Reading has one. I think we should have one here. I think these would be great six-figure jobs. And then when you have people based here, both the pilots and the stewardesses, we will get more flights because they all like to fly home in the evening, and that's what we need here, the people to stay overnight and contribute to our community. I think it'd be a great asset. So I'm kind of lobbying for this little cause here. For any of you who wish to participate in that, I'm happy to have discussion with you later. Thank you for opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And anybody else here today who'd like to speak? Yes, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Ryan Derby, Office of Emergency Services, speaking on item D10. Just want to recognize the Department of Health and Human Services for their proactive approach to emergency management. They've been working really diligently over the last few years to identify emergency shelter locations, get social services staff and volunteers trained up on mask care and shelter, and now bringing emergency shelter supplies into the county so we don't have to wait for supplies to be distributed from down south. So I know we do have a program representative in the room that doesn't want to talk, but I want to just recognize Terrence and his team for the good work that they're doing.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Terrence. Yes. Supervisor Bone?
And I apologize, Liz. I didn't see you there. I looked right over you. Did you want to get up and say something about this?
Give us a moment.
Do you accept that?
This is a good time.
This is what I was waiting for.
All right. Thank you very much.
This is a great time.
Yeah, I was hiding behind the podium.
Yeah. I saw you.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Margiria. I live here in Eureka and have lived in Humboldt County for many years. And thank you for this opportunity. I did want to just speak a bit to the item before you on the consent calendar. You know, the McKay Community Forest really represents the values that Seth embraced throughout his life and public career, which would be the opportunity to develop more recreational opportunities for families to enjoy and to restore watersheds, forest land, and just general resource conservation. Is this low enough? Am I fine on? Yeah. Thanks.
There you go.
Thanks. And certainly, the community forest represents these values and with the added benefit, of course, for sustainable forest management and will also generate some funds for the county to continue to develop this tract of land and right on the outskirts. You know, Seth was a big thinker who often challenged the status quo. He was respectful, thoughtful, and not afraid to speak to his core values. His passion for this place, the North Coast, was forged as a young man. When at 18 years of age, he took a job with the Forest Service, took a Greyhound bus from San Jose all the way to Gaski and was assigned in the first five minutes to be a lookout up on, as it turns out, Monkey Ridge in the Six Rivers National Forest. In fact, it's the same, any of you have had an opportunity to visit that and have been up to Bear Basin Buttes, where years ago, they moved the Monkey Ridge lookout over to Bear Basin Buttes, and it's now a public facility and a wonderful place. Our family's been there many times. Anyway, that's where Seth started in this community, and he really never looked back. Attended Humboldt State University and then continued to live here throughout his life. And of course, which has already been covered, Seth was a supervisor here from 1972 to 1976. And then many years later, he got his master's degree in planning at the age of 60. Many years later, then he was appointed to the Humboldt County Planning Commission, where he served for 10 years as they considered the general plan, as you know. That was a long and arduous and process. He loved it. I used to say, I can't, if you weren't on it, I don't think I could bear to even watch those meetings. They were so complicated and drawn out. Anyway. But our family is really happy to be able to donate these funds for the development of equestrian trails there and see it really as an opportunity and also maybe to help promote and have others think about donating funds for this to develop specifically equestrian trails on McKay Track. So it really seemed the perfect opportunity to honor his memory and promote a project that reflects his values. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell, why don't you wait?
Thank you. I don't know your husband as some others do, but thank you for giving us a little bit of insight into his life. And I was, when you said he got his master's when he was 60?
Yeah. Went back to school.
You're never too old to learn, right?
No, never.
So thank you. And I'm a horse person, and so.
Great.
Yeah. So that's awesome. And there's a lot, there's not a lot of area for people with horses if they don't have their own land, so that's great.
No, that's right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. And a couple more comments, I believe.
Well, and this actually plays real well because, you know, our public works, Tom and Hank Seaman had the foresight when we did the North Ridge parking lot, there is an area for horses to unload. It's a gravel area off the paved area for the regular cars so we could put horses in and out. I get a lot of horse traffic at Redwood Fields because I've used, I'm letting, you know, the McKay Track use that as an access point. And then obviously, we can access, we're trying, we've worked out an arrangement, I believe we're working arrangement with, out at Redwood Acres. So, I mean, it's going to be a big deal. The big problem's going to be is electric bicycles, walkers, and horses. So that train wreck's coming.
Well.
But anyway, this is a great step forward, and thank you very much from all the board, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, Chairman Drun. It's nice to see you, Liz. Wait, am I going to see you tonight?
You are going to see me tonight. Yes, some of you are seeing me tonight.
That's right. I just want to emphasize the impact that Seth had with relationship. We just talk about like the general plan like it's just a pile of paper sometimes, but it's really, it was very important work and a very important fight and struggle that Seth and others had during that time when they really had to work hard to preserve open space and values around protection of our natural resources and access. And I think that those policies would not be as strong as we have them today if it wasn't for Seth and a few other folks.
Oh, thank you.
Just putting in the hours and the families that supported them. So I really appreciate that. And I know that as we look at trail planning with relationship to the McKay track and it's now, we're really, you know, there's visions with relationship to its connectivity beyond that space and someday potentially reaching all the way to Blue Lake and Fortuna.
That would be fabulous.
So I think that's the, that's where we got to, that's what we're talking about. So it's great. And thank you for this donation. It's more than just, it's in and of by itself, it's an aggregate with all the efforts. So thank you.
And I should say, I forgot to mention, of course, at the time of Seth's passing, we had created this fund, and many friends and colleagues, family members, all contributed. So we didn't just write the check from our own funds, but really from, it really represents, I guess, confidence in, anyway, that people had in him as well. So thank you for that very much. And I will just make a pitch. It is tonight the Humboldt Library Foundation Holiday Gala, and I think I don't appear before this board without mentioning that and making a pitch. Thank you all so much.
I'll be at Sacramento.
I know. Thank you.
Are there any tickets left for tonight still?
Oh, we will always find room. You know how that goes.
Yep, good.
You're talking to a fundraiser.
Good.
We're sold out, but we'll find room, you know?
It is 5:30 tonight at the Sequoia Conference Center.
Sequoia Conference Center. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you for all your work. All right. Anybody else on a public comment on our consent agenda? If so, please step up to the podium. This is your chance. And seeing no movement, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
I do have a comment on one item, and I was going to ask, it's item number three, which is the letter to around, to fish and wildlife with relationship to the nearshore groundfish fishery season closure. And I think Rex, Supervisor Bone, you put that, put this on here. Is there, I just want to, I have a, I'm hoping that, I think a letter should go out. I just, there are sentences in here that say that we did things. And I, and again, I'm hoping that when we put letters out that, I don't want people to misconstrue.
Mike, you can change it any way you want. I was just trying to, I was just trying to make, and basically, I plagiarized the hell out of this from Del Norte.
Yes.
Because it's affecting them terribly. It's affecting, you go talk to England Marine and our local fisheries, and they don't feel it's as scientific-based, it's just a regular.
Okay. I wasn't done. Hold on a second. So I just, what I want to get at is there are sentences that we have expressed these concerns and offered suggestions for improved methodology in our oral comments and written statements to the Pacific Fisheries Marine Council, that we would be us as supervisors, I don't remember us doing that. So that, I would just hope, I'm just asking that, I think this letter should go out relative to the concern, but if you could work with the chair to just correct the statements in here to make them factually correct with relationship to our engagement, that's all I'm asking.
I'll work with the CIO, and they can rewrite. Because basically, the letter, as I said, we copied from Del Norte because, and we were a couple of weeks getting it out, but it just, it didn't, basically, we're trying to get the point across, and you're right, I probably over just eased it, as we always said, and then these are great points to bring up.
That's all.
Thanks.
That's it. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
And we have a second.
I'll second. May I also make a comment?
Yes. And I saw Michelle first, so Supervisor Bushnell, and then Aril.
Thank you. So along with what Supervisor Wilson said, I spoke with Jason Lyles and have an email from him that has some fact sheet, and I will share that with the CIO. I also was going to bring a letter, a little different content, but I'll be happy to share that content.
Supervisor Aril, and then I'll go to CIO Hayes.
Okay. Mine was also about the letter, which is many of the, I fully concur with this process and, you know, think that the intent is to send a letter about our concern, and I trust that you all can refine it so that it reflects accurately what we have done and what we're asking for. But I want to note that I've communicated with several folks in the fisheries community about this issue, so it is accurate to say that, you know, we have, I believe, all had our own conversations with the Fisher people of Humboldt County, so that part remains accurate.
Great. CIO Hayes.
I just wanted to offer a clarification on the motion that it is to approve the consent calendar with the suggested modifications to item number three.
Yes. And in that, CIO can work with Supervisor, excuse me, Bone and Bushnell to get that letter accurate, and that'd be great. Thank you.
All right. And since I may be gone for three days down Sacramento and LA, I will let you work with Supervisor Bushnell, because basically, the content and the point is what I'm trying to get across. It's a financial hit to our fishermen along the Northwest Coast, and that's, you know, and we've really got to look at it.
Okay. That completes our discussion, it looks like. And again, thank you Supervisor Bone for bringing that item forward, and I appreciate the work on everybody's part to help with that. So I guess we'll go ahead.
Sorry.
CIO Hayes.
Point of order. We need the second or two to approve that modification, to provide that clarification. Approved. As you were saying it, I did a thumbs up, but I realized that was not an official approval.
Okay. We have a modified motion and a second, and go ahead and cast your votes on our electronic system.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay. And with that, session that will come up at 11 o'clock, and some of those we're actually going to end up doing at 1 o'clock, but they're scheduled at 11 to be read into the record. And then we have a time set at 2:30 for the Measure Z ad hoc recommendations. So those are items that will be coming on the agenda down the road. But at this point, we're going to pick up item I1, which is appointment of Chair and Vice Chair for the Board of Supervisors for calendar year 2024.
Chairman Drun.
Yes.
We have a public comment on non-agenda items.
On which item?
Non-agenda items.
Thank you very much. Gosh, it's great to have a team up here. Always find these little issues. So thank you so much. I was rushing right ahead, wasn't I? All right. We're going to take public comment on non-agenda items, and I'll take a look at Zoom and see if we have anybody in there. There is one hand up there, and that is 0116. You are, there you go. Welcome.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello. Ash here with LostCoastPopulist.com. Wanted to talk about a recent quote I heard from Bill Gates, and the quote is, are we the scientists or the idiots? And he's talking about this funding scheme he has to chop down and bury millions of acres of trees as carbon offsets, you know, for people who fly around in their private jets with their yachts and all, to, you know, combat and reduce global warming, cut down and bury millions of trees. Yep. Using 6.6 million in seed funding from Gates Breakthrough Energy and others, Kodama Systems wants to cut down 70 million acres of western forests over the next decade. And this is primarily in California, so this directly impacts us. But I don't know if any of you are aware that, you know, we're kind of in the midst of a, like a housing crisis, homelessness crisis? So how many homes could be built with 70 million acres of trees that this rich guy, Bill Gates, wants to cut down and bury to create carbon offsets? So will people like him, who have millions of dollars to spend on these carbon offsets, can justify flying around in private jets? I mean, how many houses could be built with 70 million acres of trees? Think about it. Yeah. But the excessive emissions from these yachts and private jets and extravagant lifestyles of these, you know, handful of billionaires far surpass the annual energy emissions of millions of homes and lifestyles of us common folks. So yeah, 70 million acres of trees they want to cut down and bury to justify their lifestyles. And while Greta might, Greta Thunberg might, you know, travel around on sailboats, she does push the panic. And a quote from her is, I don't want you to be hopeful, I want you to panic. As you all know, the best decisions are made while panicking. Consider the possibility that anyone being snowballed by this climate fear porn are following the lead of idiots and not scientists. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And that's it in the Zoom, so anybody here today that would like to make public comment on non-agenda items, this is your opportunity. Welcome.
Ken Swawski, I always appreciate it when, you know, you guys stay in the room when we're making public comment on non-agenda items rather than leaving here. Won't mention names. It's the time for politics, very interesting time. My understanding is that Supervisor Bushnell has a Brian Roberts running against her. Rex has Gordon, who's in the room here. And then there's somebody apparently going to be running against Supervisor Wilson by the name of Ray Gomez. And as you know, I talk to everybody involved in this process, and I strongly feel it's very good somebody's running. I think it's always good to have somebody running and let the voters vote. I do wish to make comment now. I have a problem with one person who's running for a judgeship, and I don't, most people don't pay attention to judgeships. I mean, they just say, hey, they're going to be there. But this person, I feel, is not qualified to be a judge. I refer to him as the not-so-honorable Gregory J. Kreis. His rollout is December 13 at 2:15 at the Old Town gazebo, and I'm rolling him out right now as far as running. I'm going to do a pre-rollout. So his problem was that he, during a possibly sanctioned event up at, if I recall, Shasta Lake, engaged in, he was basically, as a judge, was, in my opinion, drunk and disorder in public. He was accused of, and it hasn't come to fruition yet, but trial in a court of public opinion of making unwedded advances to women that were there in his drunken state. And then he proceeded to commit assault and battery on one of the county employees and threw him off the boat. He used a very derogatory term to this person, and I hate to even have it come out of my lips, but he referred to him as the Jew boy. This is not the kind of judge we wish to have, and I'm hoping the judges upstairs will take it upon themselves to reach out to Mr. Kreis and suggest that he not run for a judge. I don't think that somebody in this nature who engages in these things should be a judge, and it does not reflect well upon our judicial system here in Humboldt County. Of course, I'm happy to debate these topics with Mr. Kreis in this forum or any other forum he chooses, but people should really look at judges and look at their history and think, see whether they're, take the time. Ask people who know. Ask lawyers who know. Find out who the good judges are. And I strongly support all of you doing that, and hopefully, Mr. Judge Kreis will not run. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And anyone else who would like to address this today on non-agenda items? Welcome.
Thank you. How's it going today? My name is Gordon Clapworthy. I'm running for First District Supervisor. You know, housing is going to be the biggest issue I always try to talk about and always try to push, but right now, we're past that with, again, I'm bringing up the Cal Poly Humboldt students that were recently kicked out of the parking lots that are going to be camping around throughout Humboldt County during the winter time. I think as a county, we need to rethink our camping laws that we have in place and try to show how kind and welcoming Humboldt County is to people that are displaced. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Seeing, oh, looks like we do have one more person. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Margarita, and I was actually a student at Cal Poly, and I wasn't going to say anything, but since Gordon brought up house of students, at my university, they kicked out the unhoused students. They evicted them over some racist and discriminatory things, and they're raising tuition at the university. There's just, also this genocide in Palestine. I wish more people were talking about it and were brave enough to say that the way we treat other people and that our system is, our tax money is going to fund genocide and just these weapon contracts, and we, it's crazy that we pay for those things, but I guess that's the attitude of government, is that it's profit over people, but I wish it was otherwise. And I just see you guys sitting in so much power, and I envied you and almost ran for office, but I just think that there's a lot that could be done for other people, not on these positions, because I look around and this room is really white and seems very wealthy also. So just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. And we do encourage people to run, especially the young folks. Let's get out there and do it. Any other comments from the public on non-agenda items? Seeing none, then we'll bring it back to the board. And again, we're going to jump into item I1, which is the appointment of Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors. So we'll start out with any comments, concerns, questions from the board, then we'll take public comment, and then come back to the board for a motion. So any comments from the board at this point? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and get some public comment. And we do have one hand up in the Zoom at this point, and that is 0151. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi. So this is Dottie from Southern Humboldt, and I hit star nine five times. So I'm not exactly sure what happened, but here I am, and I would like to make a comment. And that is that the situation that we have happening right now with not having an extreme weather shelter.
Dottie, I'm going to. Dottie, excuse me, just a second. We're going to hold your time for a second. I'm going to go ahead and let you comment. I did note that you had, your hand came up, it went down, it came up, and I'm going to make an exception and allow you to make public comment on non-agenda items. I believe that's what you're looking to do.
Yes. That's perfect.
Yes. Go ahead. Go ahead and finish your comments, Dottie.
Yes. Yeah. So we don't have an extreme weather shelter. We don't have a lot of the things that we need throughout the county, especially for us that we see in Southern Humboldt. A lot of money has been funded for helping people that are homeless, helping rapid rehousing. That's not what's happening down here. So I really encourage you all to take a quick look, to look at where your money has gone, what it's been used for, and what's happening. Because I recently saw a family, a three-generation family with a six-year-old child who was sleeping in a tent when it was below 40 degrees, and that's not acceptable. And they said, oh, well, there's nothing that anybody has, there's nothing down here, whatever. That is not acceptable. So I urge each one of you to come and see what's going on down here, to talk to us, to talk to other people that are, we are evicting because they have not gotten any funds, not relocated, not anything. And I can't support them for 18 months. So it's been 18 months that we've been waiting to have some help. I've been to the meetings with you folks, and now the lawyer is getting the money instead of these people saying house, and it's just not acceptable. So I urge each one of you to contact me so that we can do something better. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And I'm going to allow Supervisor Bushnell to give us a quick update on what's available, I believe.
Thank you. Dottie, always you have my phone number, please reach out. And I have been working with Connie and DHHS and the Baptist Church in Redway. We're in an active role of having a cold weather shelter and a lot of items available in the Southern Humboldt area. So please don't say we don't have one if you don't know for sure, because I don't want people to not seek that shelter if they need it. We are moving forward and going to have that set up before it's cold. And currently, the Baptist Church is also serving hot meals and offering a lot to the houseless population down in Southern Humboldt.
Great. Thanks for that update. And of course, we can't have discussion, but appreciate the update on items like that. So at this point, we're back to comments on item I-1, appointment of Chair and Vice Chair. And we did the, I don't see any hands up in Zoom on this one, so we're going to go ahead and go to the public here at large. Please step forward and welcome.
Very briefly, it sounds like we need a little bit more outreach as far as what's available. I did wish to, I've been in the chamber, I think, longer than anybody sitting up at the board. Rex came on with part thing there, and he received when his predecessor stepped down. And I was there when he was on the thing, so I believe I did precede you as far as being in the chamber, Rex. You were put in that position, and I remember some very derogatory things were said about Jimmy Smits at the time, and that was one of the few times when things were shut down, I remember, if that's what I recall, as far as the meeting goes. And I, in my whole time of being here, I always observe who is the chair and how they handle the meetings. This is very important. Virginia Bass was asked to fill in, I believe, if I recall, because Mike Wilson was extremely busy. And so she served two terms in a row as far as being chair. And I can understand that, you know. I appreciate willingness to advocate to someone when it's difficult for someone to fill a position and weren't comfortable. In all my time here, and I wasn't here before that, I can't remember who the first chair was, maybe Mark Lovelace, I'm not sure. But anyway, I have not seen a chair run as fair, concise, and keep me moving as long as Supervisor Madron has done. And I want to thank him for that from the public viewpoint. This is something that's really good. If he's not to be elected again or put in the chair again, which I would actually encourage you folks to do, I hope that whoever's in that chair will follow his lead and run the meeting in the manner he has, using time sets, managing all of our time as productively as possible, very rarely forgetting public comment on non-agenda items. But anyway, that's important to the public. We need to feel like we're welcome here. And if someone is of a nature where they are not respectful to you and are not able to communicate with the public, then that reflects on all the whole board here. So I did want to thank Supervisor Madron for his service in this position, and hopefully you all can learn from how these meetings have been run and how the public feels respected in the process. Example today was when he allowed Dottie to go ahead and speak and understood because of technology that sometimes things don't happen right. And that kind of wisdom sitting in a chair is very important to all of us. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. Anybody else that would like to speak on this agenda item? This is your opportunity to come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. And I appreciate that comment, but I, you know, one of the things I've always loved about the board and our Chair and Vice Chair positions is that we rotate them annually. And we make this decision in December, you know, so that we can timely have those folks take those seats in January. And it really is an amazing thing, I think. It's a way of sharing power, so to speak, and respecting the process of being able to rotate it from one district to the next. And so I'm District Five, and so Supervisor Bone is in line for Chair, using that tradition that we have. It's not a policy, it's not an ordinance, it's a tradition. And I think it's a really excellent tradition. And then Supervisor Bushnell, in rotation, would then be Vice Chair. And so I'll bring it back to the board for comments, but I just wanted to make that clear that that's the way we normally do it, unless the particular person that is rotating in his chair wants to do something different. But I think it is out of respect and out of sharing our positions and our opportunities that we have this tradition, and it's a good tradition, I believe. So any comments from the board? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. So I want to thank you, Supervisor Madron, for your year as Chair and taking that on and really, you know, starting some new policies, I guess, or new things with being the Chair. And so I really want to thank you. And then I would also like to ask Supervisor Bone if he is interested to continue that tradition and be Chair next year. And I would say that I would like to be Vice Chair.
Either way, because I remember when that happened for me, I'm like, wait, I still want to. Yeah. Supervisor Bone?
Well, yeah, and everybody has their own style. And, you know, there's going to be people that don't like the individual, and a lot of people jump back and forth and things like that. But I think this isn't so much about the individuals, it's about the individual who's elected to his district, so his district has the chance of being represented as Chair. And I think that's an important part of it. There is actually, you mentioned power, there's actually no power to it at all. You get to sign a lot of stuff, and you get Chair thrown in your, and you get to be on top of the letterhead, I think. No, but I mean, I've been Chair twice before through the rotation. I've been honored to do it. I got, I was appointed after I won my election by the governor to take over. Jimmy had talked to me before the election about if I'd be willing to take over immediately so he could start treatments. And I was able to work my work schedule and everything out for his benefit and was very proud to have his support in my next election. But with that being said, I think that first year I was Chair, we had 94 or 97 meetings because we were deep down inside of the general plan. And it was a tumultuous time, to say the least, but I think we got there. There was a lot of public involvement. I enjoyed being Chair. And just out of, you know, you look back, because you don't remember. So I asked staff, did I do an okay job? Staff said I did a great job. They appreciated my input. And I stayed in my lane. And I mean, we can sit up here, we've got the titles, we've got everything and stuff like that, but we're a puddle of water without staff. We cannot do anything we do up here without staff. I know I can't. Maybe you guys are superpowered, but I can't, because they dictate, they handle our travel, they set up our appointments, they get everything ready for us, they find our keys when we lose them, they get our stuff ready. I mean, our staff is amazing, and I mean, I know we're going to have our time, but I'm scared to death because I've known Kathy for 30 years, but Kathy's going to pull the plug on us, and I have been so proud to work with her for over 11 years. I'm not supposed to say anything. Okay, you guys didn't hear that. But what I'm saying is our staff has been, and we've had a lot of our staff here for the whole 11 years. I would be honored to be Chair again. Like I said, I've done it twice before, and I didn't get any complaints that I remember, but I'm sure there's plenty now. So, thank you.
Supervisor Bone, very much appreciate that. And I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to appoint you to Chair and Vice Chair. And is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Chair and Vice Chair?
Chair and Supervisor Bushnell to Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just, Kathy came out, so I was wondering if she, do you have anything to add, Kathy?
No, I think you've covered it all pretty well. Thank you, Supervisor Madron, for giving the board and the public the history of how we go about selecting our Chair and Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I believe you're also here for the next item, right?
I am.
Which will take a little bit longer. Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, and I do appreciate the tradition of this, as we call it. And in terms of respecting the process that we have, I just want to help folks, so if they're postulating as to why, when the year came that I was going to do this, why I chose to or asked Supervisor Bass to step in. We were in COVID, right? We're in the middle of COVID, I had two kids at home. We were doing Zoom, there was a lot of stuff going on. And we were trying to manage, as you know, all of, as the Chair, all of the stuff happening in the thing. I will say that the position itself does come with some responsibilities, mostly signing things, the agendas, but ultimately, it's just basically taking on a task that helps the board move through meetings. So it was going to be Virginia's last year here, and she really liked this, she liked this position. So in balance, it seemed reasonable to ask her if she would be willing to take that on, and she did. And I really appreciated that. It was very helpful during that time when there was a lot of people at home and trying to manage these meetings, which some of them were very, very long. So I just want to put out there that I appreciate that. I have chaired many meetings on many boards, and I actually enjoy it to a certain degree. And I don't think I'm bad at it, but I just wanted to, so that everyone understands what, so we don't have to postulate about it, imagine what the reasons were.
Thank you for that clarification and information. Appreciate it. Supervisor O'Royall?
Thank you. And Steve, I'd like to thank you for your role as the Chair and for really striving to find opportunities for us to find common ground and to balance the different perspectives we have and to run efficient meetings and learning from things that didn't go well and making changes to help them go better. I think that's good leadership. So I appreciate you doing that, and it's been a pleasure to have you as the Chair during my first year on this board. And I look forward to the coming year with Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell helping to expedite our meetings and make sure that we're hearing from the public but also moving through the agenda. So I really look forward to that leadership as well. So thank you very much to all of you for serving.
And I believe Supervisor Wilson has one more comment.
I just want to add to that, because both at the very end of, at the end of Supervisor Bass's time as Chair and then now your time, I think what people may not have seen is that we've had a big technological shift occur with relationship to, we went immediately into Zoom 2020, just like instantaneously, and then we were just doing that. The transition out of that or in the hybridized version of that has been both a technological shift and a staffing and administrative undertaking to do that has not been easy. And being Chair to try and manage all of that and everyone's expectations around that has been very, well, I know it's taken a lot of energy of everybody, just in the staff and the Chair. And I just really appreciate your leadership, Steve, with relationship to adapting to that. And, you know, every once in a while, we would all get sort of frustrated at different moments in time, because we're human beings. But helping us get through that, I really appreciate. And we're actually not all the way. I mean, we're still transitioning with relationship to these technologies, and they're not easy. And so I just want to really appreciate that time that you did with relationship to that, because it was not fun, some of it. So Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I didn't want to downplay, you made a good point. There is responsibilities involved. There's back to, there's very little power. So I mean, I want to clarify that. And you're right. And this goes back to reiterate, all these technological things and everything else, if it wouldn't have been for Nikki and Brooke and Tracy and staff and Kathy, who sit here the other four days of the week, working with IT and our CAO's office, getting all of this taken care of and getting it done. Again, we didn't, we get to drive the boat, we get to honk the horn, but we have no idea how it runs. And they're the ones who make it run. So I just, that's one of the reasons that the Chair doesn't scare me, because we've got such a dependable staff. And I appreciate everything you've done this year. And the transition is far from over. We're going to be making some more changes. Fair warning before you vote.
Well, thank you all for all those comments. And I too am looking forward to Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell being in our leadership role here at the Chair over this next year. And, you know, I couldn't have chaired the meetings if it wasn't for the cooperation and buy-in from all of the board and Nikki's backup and Eric at Access Humboldt and just everybody, really. I mean, as you saw earlier today, oh, public comment on non-agenda items, right? None of us get it all right, but together as a team of people, we're able to manage this and move forward together. And I have always appreciated that support when I forget something or jump over something. So thank you all for those comments. And with that, I guess we should go ahead and cast our votes.
The votes have all been casted. It was recorded up there, but gone now, but it carried 5-0.
Great. Fantastic. All right. Great. So in January, Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell will take over and I imagine shift seats, because Vice Chair sits next to the Chair, and we'll do a little rearranging at that time. At any rate, so we've got that item complete, and now we'll go to the next item, which will take us a little bit more time, and that is appointment of board members to various boards, commissions, and committees for calendar year 2024. And I wanted to follow the similar process that we did last year. I actually had the honor of doing this in January, and that was because we had a new board member coming on that had just been elected, actually back in June, but took office in January. So when that happens, we do all this work in January so that we can include that new board member. But in a year like this, we go ahead and get it done in December. And so what I'll do is go down through the list and see who's currently serving as the member and the alternate, and if they want to continue or if somebody else wants to step in. And I think probably about 90% or so of these, there will be no competition, shall we say, or double people wanting to take a position. So we'll get through all the ones where it's just straightforward. That'll leave us with a number, maybe five or more, that maybe there's two people that want to serve, and so we'll come back to those and then see what the board's pleasure is in regards to those. Does that sound good as a process for everybody? Okay. Supervisor Bone?
And I, you know, from my lessons learned last year and stuff, when you decide you want to do something, I think about your schedules and everything else, because I think we owe it to these boards that we will make it to the meetings at least two-thirds of the time.
Yep.
We've been very, we've been very missive on a couple of large, I happen to look back at a few agendas, we're missing quite a few meetings. And I think it's so important, because we, on a lot of these committees that were involved with the cities, we're the biggest player. We're the most affected by the policies that they are enacting. And if we're not at the table, we're on the menu. So if you're taking the position, I think it's so important that you show up. And then on some of them, the alternate needs to be notified if you're not going to be there. And it's not yours to decide, we have to have someone at the table. So as you go through all these, some of these are pretty important, and some of them, we've been missing quite a bit. And I think it's important that we, you know, serve the duties. So I, and I'm part of that, too. I'm not just point fingers, that's all encompassing. So we have to work really hard. I didn't realize until I got a couple of phone calls earlier in the year that the importance of us being at these meetings when these big decisions are made for us.
Absolutely. Thank you for that reminder of the responsibilities that we're taking on. Appreciate that. County Clerk, Clerk of the Board, Kathy Hayes, would you like to provide us with any feedback or direction at this point?
Sure. Just noting that there are a few boards and commissions on this list where your board has already taken action to appoint those individuals, for instance, RCRC and CSAC. A necessity for those particular boards required appointments early. So just, they should be noted and read on the list as you go through. So those are ones that have already been appointed, and you don't need to take any action on those.
Great. Thank you very much. And I think in the previous board meetings, we've also talked about considering whether or not a particular committee should continue or not. Trimming things down is always a good thing if it's no longer really active or of value to the county, so we might consider those as we go along as well. All right, so we'll go ahead and jump in on this list, and I know Kathy will be taking notes, as will I. The first one on the list is Air Quality Management District, North Coast Unified. And we currently have Supervisor Bone and Wilson as members, and I am the alternate. Do you folks want to continue to serve? Supervisor Bone?
I would. I don't know about Supervisor Wood, but we've actually made some great moves on prescribed burns. I would. I don't know about Supervisor Wood, but we've actually made some great moves on prescribed burns. The, we, there's, there's been some pretty good movement. So I, I don't mind. I think I've been on it 10 years now, so.
All right. Sounds like that one's a done deal. We'll keep it as it is. The next one is Area One Agency on Aging, the Advisory Council. It's not their board, it's their advisory council. Their board meets on Tuesday, so that makes it difficult, but as advisory council, it's usually on Monday or something else. I'm currently a member, and Supervisor O'Royall is the alternate. I've done it for a couple of years. I very much enjoy working with them. But if somebody else is interested in stepping up to do that, I'd be more than willing to step back. So how are you feeling, alternate O'Royall?
I'm happy to stay on as the alternate if you'd like to continue to serve in that role.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Well, we got that one. It really is. I have to say, I really enjoy the board working so well together, frankly speaking. It makes all of our jobs so much easier. Humboldt County Audit Committee, which is, will switch automatically. The chair and the vice chair serve on that audit committee. So we will have Supervisor Bone has already been on that committee. Now he'll be chair. And Supervisor Bushnell will now be vice chair on the audit committee. And Supervisor Bushnell?
I just have a question. I know this was formed a couple of years ago, and, you know, we, as you said, we talk about the need. Is there a need still?
I think it's helpful, yeah. It sort of fell off of meeting at the end of the term of the prior auditor controller. And now we have reinstituted that regular meeting schedule, and they are meeting quarterly. I think with a meeting actually this week or next week coming up. So yeah, for the time being, I believe that group finds it helpful. Okay. Thank you for that.
Great. Yeah, they're bringing forward a lot of completed audits all at once, so a lot of action there right now. Okay, so that one's completed. The next one is HCOG, Humboldt County Association of Governments. I'm currently the member. Supervisor Wilson is currently the alternate. Often the chair will be the representative, but I've also heard over the years that it's nice to have consistency. I would like to continue to serve, but again, others may want to like the chair, so.
You know, I, we actually changed that tradition the year I followed Ryan Sundberg. And a lot of the, a lot of the members on there, I know, are the mayors of the cities and stuff like that. So they're on their two or three years, and then we throw somebody in there not knowing what's going on. It takes four months to figure out, and then you're off it in eight months. And so I've always been more than willing to relinquish as long as you keep everybody in mind on when you make decisions. So I mean, as long as, I'm fine with that. I don't, I don't need to be on that. I don't want to miss Thursday night football. No, I'm just kidding. I don't, I don't pay for the NFL channel, so I don't get Thursday night football. But no, that's fine. I mean, I don't have a problem with it all. But that was made, gosh, like I said, quite a few years ago when I came on, and I thought we'd stay consistent with, with Ryan on there. So we, I can do, I, I have no problem deferring.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your levity as well. So thank you for that. Anybody else with any other interest there? Supervisor Wilson, are you willing to continue serving as the alternate?
Yes, it's, it's great. And I have done it a couple of times.
Yes. And I will also point out that we also get a twofer here in that Supervisor O'Royall sits in the, the HCOG board as a, what's the title?
Policy Advisory Committee. So most of that meeting is, is under the umbrella of that Policy Advisory Committee. So I go as the Humboldt Transit Authority Chair.
And that, and that is what you have been. And so, okay, great. So we get a twofer there. Okay, well, it sounds like we're okay with keeping it as it is. I appreciate that. I've enjoyed my work at HCOG. It's a really critical time with roads and road funding and other issues that are coming before the COG. They're starting to expand into housing and help with those issues as well, and had some recent grant success. So a lot of, a lot going on there. It's a big money game. All right. The next one is the California Cannabis Authority. Currently, we have Supervisor Bone as the member, and Amy Christensen is an alternate, although sometimes both of them attend.
Yes.
I, I will stay with that because there are some things happening, and they're actually fairly well-funded by us. But I, we, I would suggest we look at this next year, and if we don't make great strides, and it's just because we put the green and the triangle, I think we need to have a seat at the table. But, and they've made some, some good strides. There's some good information there. And they're actually reaching out and bringing, and they're working with California cities and bringing on cities now, not just counties. So I mean, there are things changing, and we can stay on top of it, and anything that may work somewhere else may work for us and vice versa. So I could do one more year. I think it's two Zooms and one meeting in person a year.
Okay. And very much appreciate those comments. Yeah, we pay $20,000 a year for our membership there. And so I like the idea of revisiting it next year and seeing if there's, if the benefit to the county matches the expense. So thank you for that, Supervisor Bone. Yeah, great. Okay. Any other comments on that one? Yes, Supervisor O'Royall.
I, I was going to ask, just because I don't really know much about the advocacy or the, or I guess I shouldn't say advocacy, but the role of that, of that entity. I'd love to get a report, if we could, about what they've been doing and just, you know, that is a pretty substantial funding for something that I, I'm just not, I'm just not aware of what the.
I fully agree. It's a pretty substantial part of our income, if we've noticed in the last five years too.
Yeah.
As we move along. It is a subsidiary of CSAC or a start off, start off of CSAC. And I can certainly get a report, and I think there's some online versions. But yeah, I can, I can do that or even maybe even get them here in front of us if, if, if need be, so.
That'd be helpful. Yeah, I like the idea of considering, you know, our, our participation in that particular way and not to undervalue what you're doing there. I just, I just don't know what it is. So I'd, I'd love to hear that presentation.
I can't be undervalued. You're okay.
And, you know, that brings up the fact that we all engage in these various committees, and we rarely make any reports to the board about what's going on in those places. If we did that at every meeting, I think at one time in the past, I heard there was some sort of an update from every board member from their district, and it eventually morphed into almost a half hour for every board member. There's two and a half hours out of the meeting. So we're certainly not going to do that. But we might want to rotate in these items on a quarterly or semi-annual basis and have an opportunity for the board representative to kind of update the rest of the board on what's going on there. I'd love to tell you, you know, stuff at HCOG. Both Natalie and I could do that. But it sort of brings that, that thought up. So Supervisor, I appreciate, why don't we maybe at the next meeting, if we could agendize you giving us an update on the California Cannabis Authority? Would that work for you? Be a very short item, just, you know, just to give the board a sense of what's going on there.
Sure. And I, the nice thing about it in this day and age with, with all the committees and everything, we, is I find myself going online a lot to look at the minutes the next day of a, of a meeting. You know, you know, we're lucky. We get to see some of this on, on, like you said, Humboldt Access Channel. But these outside ones, I look at the CSAC meetings and everything else, and they're pretty good about putting the agenda minutes and everything else because they have to. So that'd be great.
Yeah, not everyone needs that update, but some of them it'd be great to do. So we'll figure out a way to try and do that, and then I'll pass that to Supervisor Bone next year as chair. Only a couple more meetings. Yes, please.
I'm sorry. I, I just, it's, their, their website is not up for the California Cannabis Authority. It goes to a broken link. So I don't know if that's just a temporary blip, but that's, I tried to find information online about it. So that, that would be, that was what made me go, huh? What's going on?
Okay, CSAC, that's already done, as Kathy Hayes mentioned to us. So that one, we're moving on. And the next one is Caltrans North District External Advisory Liaison. And we currently have Supervisor Bone as the member, and I am the alternate. Willingness to continue to serve?
Yeah, I've done that one for eight or 10 years. And up until recently, we always met up at the Caltrans. And that brings down the head of the CHP from Del Norte, and we started the, the state line and come all the way down to almost Ucaia, projects that are coming, projects that aren't going to come. And I'll tell you what, they're very reactive to things. And I, and I'll tell you guys, take a chance when you, when you see these dates are, if you want. If you guys have a Caltrans issue, let me know because they react. Tom Fitzgerald and Matt and, and Brandon Larson react in a heartbeat. And that's one of the reasons I'm going down to the CTC Commission on Thursday Forum, they asked. So Supervisor Bushnell can't make it. So we were both going to go down to speak on a couple of items.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. Supervisor Wilson?
Through the chair. This is one that I had thought about being interested in. And, and the reason for that was just that there has been a lot of change with relationship to Caltrans, a lot of positive change. And I think Supervisor Bone has, has seen it and with relationship to responsiveness, but even to sort of the vision and the scope of what transportation is. They're just taking a much more multimodal and community impact assessment approach, and I really appreciate that. Under the assumption, and we already made one assumption, that, that HTA may possibly remain the same. This conflicts with that. And so, so I was like, okay, well then I'm not going to ask about this. But I will, I do want to ask this question. Is, is the quarterly on the first Wednesday at 9:30 to 11:00? Is that just, is that just a meeting for just you with them or, not you, but I mean, our, our county seat with them? Or is that, is that how multi, multi agencies?
They have, they have all their project managers, so we get an update last chance. We get an update on Richardson's Grove. We get an update on 299. And then they also give, they go over a full list of projects. And then they actually go over a full list of any suggestions we make, all the way from Crescent City down. Hey, could we fix this? Can we look at this? Can we look at that? And they come back and ask how they have addressed it. And so it's, it's very thorough. And again, you've got both Highway Patrol leadership, Larry, and, and Crescent City there. And I believe Assemblyman Woods and Senator McGuire will have representatives there sometime. So there's, it's about anywhere between 14 to 18 people, and they bring in different Caltrans people for different projects. So it's, Matt's done a really good job on putting this one together. And so it's a, it's very knowledgeable. It's, it's, it's great. And I, in all honesty, what I probably should do, and I'll start doing in the future, if you want, I will bring back the paperwork from that and give it to Kathy, and she can make copies of all the projects that are coming in your areas. Because I mean, you know, we've got the Smith River, you know, Dr. Fine Bridge, that big project up there. There's some huge projects coming, so.
That sounds great. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I appreciate this. This is, I guess, the time we talk about it a little bit, which is, it would be good, I suppose, to have that list before the meeting so that we can know if there are things we want to transmit with relationship to concerns and those sorts of things to our representative. I mean, I just want to, that's, that's the part I'm, I'm a little bit, I want to figure out a way to be able to make sure that the board has influence through the, through the rep. It's, it's either a report back or it's, or it's input into. And so I want to figure out what the process might be.
I think, and I don't know if we get, we get it, we get it the day of the meeting. We don't get an agenda to speak of. So we get it the day of the meeting. They hand it out at the meeting. And I think it's up to the minute as they're giving the report and stuff. Because this is not an official, you know, formation. This is a need to know. I, I think it's very good Caltrans does this. It's a pretty transparent thing. But what it does, it does have projects that are coming, their date, the ones that are successful, who's the successful bidder, and things like that. So I can bring that back, and then if there's questions. I mean, none of them are, hey, tomorrow, we're starting Dr. Fine. These, some of this stuff is five years in advance. So these are major construction problems that are, and some are in environmental review and stuff. But it's, it's pretty thorough. So I've, I've always enjoyed it because I've always been aware. That's, you know, I'm kind of weird that way. I like all the construction stuff and everything. So I can, I can get as much to you. But what I'm saying is, if you write down, if you put it on your trickler, you know, you got that, and you say, hey, I've got a problem at the Blue Lake exit that there's, there's a big hump and it can't get fixed. One was a big hump coming off the bridge there right by Daisy Supply there in Arcata. There was a big hump there. And they actually fixed it. They went out and fixed it because we got people, I got complaints from truckers. You probably got complaints from people, and then they went and fixed it. So those are the times we can enter that also, so.
Great. Supervisor Wilson?
I guess we'll just work on this process. Yeah, if, if there are like a list that comes out of those meetings that can be distributed, then I, I just don't want to break any sort of transparency laws with relationship to how we communicate those to one another. But I think we can figure it out. So thanks.
I don't think there's any laws to break because these aren't subject to our decision. These are decisions, these are construction projects by outside agencies on roads that pertain to them. They're not county roads. We're not going to vote on funding. We're not, we're not going to have anything to do with them. So it's kind of like when we discuss the Vineyard Wind or anything like that. We're not, you know, I mean, I, I don't know if we can, you know, tell them what to do. We can, you know. So it's a completely different, Vineyard, I know, is a little bit different, but Caltrans, we have no influence over them. I like the idea that they do take our input.
Yeah, it sounds informational, and that sounds like a good improvement to be able to, after the meeting, pass those things around. You know, I was just thinking with your earlier comments about participation, once we take on these roles. How does the board feel about, I mean, right now, the way it works is only the member is getting a calendar invite, right? But then if the alternates also got the invite, they would kind of in the back of their head go, you know, I might need to fill in there, right? Rather than not have it in your calendar at all. Does that seem like that might be an improvement? Is that something, Kathy, that would be possible? Because I don't get, I'm the alternate, but I don't get any notice of these meetings.
So normally our office, if we're notified by one of you that you would like to receive a meeting notification, even if you are the alternate, we would make that happen.
Okay, great. Great. Does that sound like a, a good thing to do or?
Well, I currently request that so that I know. And.
For all your alternate.
Yeah. And so, just because I have so far to travel, and so I always like to know. And then also, you know, I also try to like let my alternate know well in advance if I'm not going to be able to make a meeting. That's kind of really important.
Yeah, it really is.
To let people know.
The call two hours before the meeting doesn't quite work, huh?
Yeah, no. Yeah, so anyways.
All right. Supervisor O'Royall? Okay.
I was curious about the Caltrans meeting, and I have meetings with Caltrans District One that I set up separately with the higher ups there, and they've, they've been reaching out to set those up. So I think any of us could be meeting with them. And, and honestly, if you'd like to join me, maybe we can make it efficient and, and do that as well. But the, I was curious whether there's discussions about, because you mentioned Supervisor Bone, that it's just about like projects on state highways or state infrastructure. And I'm curious if they, if they discuss the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Program, which can go to, you know, other, other jurisdictions, roads or infrastructure. Are any of those discussions happening in those meetings?
They discuss funding, future funding, you know, and that. They don't talk about much the major, if somebody asks about a major project or if there's a major road failure, like when the fire destroyed the highway down south, you know, that, that comes up. But I mean, you've got an hour and a half meeting, and we're talking, you know, 1,150 miles of state highway.
Sure.
So I, I, I think we've got enough time to take care of it, you know, that's, you know, we got a lot to take care of in our own backyard, and I don't know if we have enough time to, to, to reach out, even though it's, it's pressing. So they, they keep pretty steady. Like I said, there's 14 people, you know, 10, 12, 14 people, and they're busy. So we're, they try to, they're, they're, they get through it pretty efficiently, but they, they, they answer all the questions. And like when you, the higher ups, Brandon Larson, Matt Brady, all the, we are, we are so lucky to have the people we have because, I mean, I was on a 24/7, you know, conversation when the bridge was down and, and a lot of, a lot of things. And we're very lucky to have the people we have. Tom Fitzgerald is, man, Tom Fitzgerald's over the top. So all those guys are great. So we're very fortunate.
I was essentially wondering if there was any kind of decision-making or advocacy role around like local allocations of some of the various programs that are for local roadways and not for Caltrans roadways. But it sounds like that's not really the place where that happens. But I will say that at the HCOG meetings, there's also Caltrans report on every one of those meetings. And it seems like about once a year, we get this massive list of all the projects that are happening and an opportunity to ask questions. But that's another venue where I think with a little bit of notice, the Caltrans rep there can speak about or align, line up a public presentation about any project. So that's another place to keep tabs on all the, you know, Caltrans nexus with, with our county operations.
Great. Thank you for that. And we have been having some good discussions at HCOG in regards to the gas tax or is there going to be a use tax? And what about county roads? Why don't we get a good share of that, et cetera? Because it looks like the state highways are well-maintained, but we're just not getting enough money for our county roads.
We need more than 20% of SB 1.
And then Supervisor Bushnell, you had another. And then Supervisor Bushnell, you had another comment.
Yes, thank you, my comment kind of aligns with Supervisor Arroyo, Supervisor Wilson, if you have an opportunity to call them, they're always, I, I talk with them often as well, and so they can, they seem more than happy, and I know they would with any of our board members, update you about things that are in your district.
Yeah, great, thank you for that, so it sounds like Supervisor Bone, you would like to continue as the member, I'm the alternate, but is somebody else interested in stepping up to be the alternate?
I would like to be, if possible.
Anybody else?
I'm inflexible with us, on HTA, assuming that we.
Assuming that, yeah, so, why don't we go ahead and have Supervisor Bushnell step up into that alternate position? Yeah, you bet, okay, you know, before the meeting, I always do this little thing where I do a little chart, you know, and kind of take a look at each of us, and how many member positions we have, how many alternate positions we have, and Supervisor Bone and myself definitely carry the lion's share here, he's got 21, if you add up all the alternates and the members, I've got 19, Supervisor Arroyo has 11, of course, the new member to the board typically has less, and over time, that continues to increase, Wilson 13, and Bushnell 12, so we just switched one over there, so that's good. Like Supervisor Bone said at the beginning, really consider carefully your schedules and your level of commitment, so, not that I wouldn't be committed, but I think it's great to have somebody else step up, okay, so I'm making note there, that will be Supervisor Bushnell, next is the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we have Diane, Diana Rios as a member, and Michelle Bushnell as the alternate, and that's some sort of policy or tradition on how that works? Supervisor Bushnell?
Well, so, the member is from Economic Development, and I'm the alternate, I attend sometimes when I can, but I'm happy to share that position if someone else is interested.
Anybody else interested?
And just for clarification, those are public meetings, anybody can, you know, listen in.
Great, okay, looks like we're going to stick with what we got there. Nope, okay, so we got that one done, next is the Court or County Facilities Group, and that's different than our ad-hocs that we've created, right, we created a facilities ad hoc recently, but this is different, and. Excuse me just a second, currently, we have Supervisor Wilson as member, Supervisor Bone as the alternate, and Supervisor Wilson?
I would propose that, just to make it clean with relationship to the ad hoc, if, while we have the ad hoc, that Supervisor Arroyo might be the alternate, so that there isn't any crossover with relationship to the, the facilities upgrade ad hoc, that's, that's all, I'm just, I just think it would be easier, we wouldn't have to worry about whether someone's talking to someone or not the other, and I just think it would, it would clean it up a little bit.
So you're interested in continuing as the member?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone as alternate, how do you feel?
I think they'd be great together.
Okay, that sounds like a nice easy fix there, Supervisor Arroyo will become the alternate, if you're interested, willing?
I'm, I'm perfectly willing, I, I'm also wondering about the nature of this, like, is this, these are all formal, kind of, standing committees where an agenda goes out, and does it make sense for that to be something where this is a broader facilities group, but it's a standing group, I know that that creates new administrative tasks, but it does seem like since we're having a facilities ad hoc, and we have this group, I'm actually curious what, what our staff feel about that, and whether that seems like that could be a good fit, or whether that's not ideal.
Yeah, Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm still, can you, what are you saying, I don't understand.
So this one is like one that's a standing committee that needs to be, you know, publicly noticed, and, and that's not bad, we're not trying to hide anything about facilities, but we are having other facilities discussions about non-court facilities, so I'm just curious whether this fills a specific niche, I, I don't know how this, this particular group came to be, and why it's a formal committee and not an ad hoc, or, you know, what, what it's trying to address.
Okay, content around this, okay, thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, yeah, Supervisor Wilson, and then Supervisor Bone?
This can, this committee hasn't met, so I think in the time that, so I'm, I'm, I would propose that we just end this one, and just move it all over to the ad hoc committee for the time being, until such time as we deal with that process. That would be my proposal, simplify it, we actually get to lose a committee.
Well, I was, I was going to, I was going to suggest the same thing, as we were discussing who was going to be on it, because I was, kind of like ask who wants to go to the moon tomorrow, because nobody's going to the moon tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
All right, sounds like we're mixing that one as a standing committee, of course, at some point, the ad hoc will have to deal with the fact that it's going on for more than a year maybe, so, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there, all right, so we just eliminated one on our list, so, next is the Disaster Council, which also has not met for a long, long time, but Director Derby from OES has been working to bring this back alive, the grand jury had a lot to say about this particular committee, and I, it's basically the chair and the vice chair that sit on that council, Disaster Council, I know that Director Derby is, and the sheriff are very interested in working with our coed and other partners to reinvigorate this Disaster Council, and I think we would all agree that every year, there's some disaster here in Humboldt County, like many places, whether it's fires or floods, right now, we're dealing with a lot of water, all right, and some of our roads are flooding, but, anyway, so I'm assuming that that would be Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell that would now be on that council.
Fine.
Okay, so that's the change there, and next is the Eel-Russian River Joint Powers Commission, which also hasn't met in a long time, but Supervisor Bone and Bushnell are on that committee?
Hank's still not here, that's the Sonoma telling us what we're going to settle for commission.
Is Hank still here?
No, he stepped out.
That's what I said, Hank's not here.
But, and this has changed, there's so many configurations going on now, it's going to come down to who the, you know, they keep saying they want to take it back to natural, which is, we got all the water, but we want it to come back to kind of natural, so, as this moves forward, I think Hank's got a pretty good, I, I don't mind, there is a Russian River meeting on Thursday in Yucaya, I'll be in LA, so I won't be available for it, and I know Supervisor Bushnell's busy on Wednesday and Thursday, I don't know if, I didn't get a chance to talk to Hank, I was going to see if he's going to go, or are we just, okay, Humboldt was here, because they made the decision and then sent it to us, and says, hey, how do you like this, so.
So this is different than this commission, this is a Russian River group that's meeting.
So, yeah.
Right, so do you want to leave this commission as is, or you both have part of your districts in the Eel River, nobody has anything in the Russian, although we send a lot of water that way, Supervisor Wilson?
There is no such thing as the Joint Powers Commission currently, so I kind of feel like we should just cross this one off the list for now, and till something's proposed to us, and then we can propose who would be on that.
With that, can we keep it on hold, just so it's here, because this is, I mean, much like the dams on the climate, this is a big, big deal to the Eel River.
Okay.
Huge deal to the Eel River, and I just, I think anything we have with our name on it, rather than discontinue it right now, till we decide what the heck they're going to do, and PG&E fully decides what, what card they're going to play next.
Chair, if I could suggest that this be brought back as an agenda item, to change the scope of what this is, and even the name, that's what I would suggest doing, sooner rather than later, so we can give that authority to our board members to be at those spaces and speak, as, as opposed to what this is, which is not that.
Things are morphing, definitely, we're adapting, Supervisor Bushnell?
So would, Kathy, would you be bringing that back then, or how would that work?
We would, you probably need to work with Hank and Public Works as well, this Joint Powers Authority encompasses Mendo, Sonoma, Humboldt Lake Counties, and you're right, it hasn't met in quite a while, to deal with Eel River issues, and it, it, since the Pottery Valley Project has kind of gone in a different direction, this particular group is really kind of morphed into something else, and that's why this group isn't meeting, they're really focusing on the Pottery Valley Project.
So that would be you bringing it back for discussion, as Supervisor Wilson suggests?
Whether this current group, or whether the board, whether your board wants to continue at Humboldt as a member of this Joint Powers Authority, because there is an agreement that is still in place.
There's no joint.
So basically, this will be you working with Hank and Public Works to bring back an agenda item, okay, Supervisor Bone?
And with that, I, I think everybody up here realizes that we couldn't be any more fortunate than to have Hank Seaman.
No kidding.
Because Hank Seaman is on this, I can call Hank on any of this, and, well, even before I call him, I start thinking about it, and then I get the email, so he's our own little radar, but he is so, he is so well-received and sharp on this, that it's, we're beyond lucky to have Hank on this, and he's been on it, so.
Yeah, great, great, all right, well, we're rolling down through this list, next we have the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, RCEA, and we currently have Supervisor Arroyo as the member, and Supervisor Bone as the alternate, do you two want to continue to serve, and/or is there any other interest, Supervisor Wilson?
I have interest in the alternate position, and I'll give you my pitch, which is, I have at least one, if not a couple of projects that, within the district, that I'm looking to work with RCEA on, and it would be helpful if I didn't, if I could work directly with the, our board member with relationship to that, without having to think about, again, the three people issue, one of those is with relationship to the vets hall in Arcata, and their interest in upgrading to, you know, a resilient and renewable energy system for their building, in order for them to better serve the community in times of, you know, in times of need, and especially, they're even talking about cold wa, cold weather shelter in that space as well, so if it's all right, I would like to do the alternate in this position, that's, that's my pitch.
Supervisor Bushnell?
So Supervisor Wilson, do you feel that you can't speak with RCEA because of the alternate position, or is it something that you could speak with them and say, you know, how do you feel about that?
Well, what I, well, the thing is, is I'm, what I'd like to do is actually, I'm actually, we, we, we've been talking about with relationship to the, the veterans there, a more broad programmatic perspective, and so I would like to be able to talk to staff and to the board directly, which would mean I, you know, with the board member itself, and if, if I was the alternate, I wouldn't have to think about, well, what, it just would be helpful, I, I think.
So is it more broad, broadly interested then?
Yeah.
Because, okay, so that's helpful to say, and then, you know, because I have discussions with them, I'm not on there, and I don't have that same concern, so it's just more of a broader interest.
Yeah, it, it's also that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's the Brown Act issue, three people communicating. You can, you can go directly to the agency, yes.
There are ways to clearly say, I, you know, please don't discuss this with.
Yes.
Because I also speak with them because of the energy issues that are going on in Southern Humboldt.
Absolutely.
So I just, I don't think that means we can't talk with agencies because of the two members that are involved, I just want to be clear about that.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone?
I think I've done two meetings, I think, for two or three, I don't know, I've done, I've done some meetings, I've, I've been the alternate before, I do different, I do bring a different approach, I, I'm, I don't want to say zealous, but I, you know, we all know how I stood at Terregen, and, and, and RCEA supported Terregen, which would have made us completely carbon neutral by now, but we were going to have wind energy offshore in three years, so, these are the things that sometimes I keep hearing, we need to take, we have to bite the bullet for, for, you know, carbon, you know, neutrality and, and what we're doing for our energy, but it's only the bullets we want to bite, so I've, and I, I know there's been some conditions with biomass, and I know biomass is, is, is meeting, we, you know, I know there's a big pushback on that, natural gas, I just see the European nations voted to make natural gas a green energy now, so I just read that China's opening a coal plant every 14 days, so these things kind of scare me, but I mean, on the local basis, I, I, it, we try to, you know, have all views covered, so that's where I, but I guess I could be, come in as the, I, I don't have a problem coming to meetings and saying what the hell either, so, it's fine, I just.
So what's fine, you want to continue as alternate?
I, I would like to, but if Mike wants to, in the spirit of, just, yeah, let him have it.
Okay, so it looks like we have a change there that we're agreeing to, the alternate is willing to allow Supervisor Wilson to step into the alternate position, any final comments on that? I hear Supervisor Wilson saying he appreciates that, so, okay, we've made a change there, next is Eureka City and County Roundtable Committee, Supervisor Bone is the first district supervisor, and Natalie Arroyo is the fourth district supervisor, who are on that committee, is that still active? Yeah, yeah?
It is, yeah, we've moved to meeting in person, I think on a quarterly basis.
We had some logic around those two positions, although Supervisor Wilson, I think, has a chunk of the eastern edge of the town, but up by the ballfields, at any rate, so good, we've got that one dealt with, everybody's staying right where they're at, next is the Fire Services Ad hoc, and I'm currently, myself and Supervisor Bushnell are the current members, there's a lot going on in that arena, we've got a lot of work we're doing, I would like to continue to serve, and Supervisor Bushnell, I see you nodding.
Yes, I would like to continue as well.
And really, there's a lot of action in this arena in Southern Humboldt and Northern Humboldt in a big way, not that the rest of the county isn't always part of this as well, but, okay, so any other comments from the board on that, okay, we got that, we got our first page of three pages done, good job, everybody, all right, next is First Five Humboldt, one that all of us have taken a turn serving at, it is a wonderful experience, great group, currently, we have Supervisor Bushnell as the member, and Supervisor Arroyo as the alternate, do you want to continue to serve?
I want to ask Supervisor Arroyo if she would consider switching.
I would, I do have, I do have a conflict one, yeah, on occasion, but it's, it's not something that I can't work around, so.
I'm happy to stay, I just wanted to offer you, and you filled in with me, for me twice, and I appreciate that, I just want to ask if you have that interest, it's a great group, I really love serving, it's sometimes difficult for me as well, that's why we work good together, but I just wanted to offer if you're interested.
I would be happy to stay on as the alternate, if you enjoy going, but if it's really like, I know you're very far away, so if it's really better for you, I can make it work, so I'll, I know we're being very polite about this, but honestly, whatever, whatever works for your schedule better, I'm here in town, it's very easy for me to go over there, and I would just be able to rearrange my other stuff.
I would prefer that you take that, and then I could fill in for you when you have those conflicts.
Okay.
And just, it is a long ways for me to come, and, yeah.
That sounds good, yeah, and just one minor update for the appointments list itself, is those meetings take place, I believe at 8:30, at least, and I think it says on there that they're at eight, so they're.
Okay, we'll make that correction, and it is a rite of passage to become the member for First Five Humboldt, so, it is a fantastic organization, as are many, all right, we've got that one, next is Hazardous Material Response Authority, another one that is as needed, I don't know when it's met, but Supervisor Bone is the member, and Supervisor Arroyo is the alternate, Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I, I can do that, I've got, much like Supervisor Arroyo with the Coast Guard, I mean, I've had 25 years of hazardous response, so.
Okay.
And, and we don't meet, we've only met, I think Zoom twice, I think, but it's, it's something to be addressed, so, it's one of those that's there.
Okay, keeping it the same, looks like we're good there, I don't see anybody else stepping up, Headwaters Fund Subcommittee, another very important group, we've got Supervisor Wilson as a member, and Supervisor Bone, are you guys willing to continue to serve, or is there an interest in changing any of that?
It's fine.
It's fine for both of you?
Yep.
Okay, we're good.
We could battle it out in that.
Well, you know, diversity is a strength, diversity of opinions and perspectives is a strength, next we have the Multi-Agency Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, Supervisor Wilson is the member, Supervisor Bone the alternate, and I. And I know Supervisor Wilson has something to say about that one.
Yeah, is it, this, well, there's the one below it, Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Council. I'm not sure which one is which, the.
MAGIC is the first one. So-called MAGIC is the acronym.
Okay, because the one that's been meeting that I've had trouble getting to is the one that's on when, it's on the second. Anyways, it's, it happens more often than not than when I'm, when I'm out of town on Coastal Commission and so it's been a bit of an issue. So that's been, that's been a problem. And I don't think that, that, maybe it's the second one that's on here, that's the Prevention Commission. The one that Kelsey Reddy runs, who she's amazing and is doing a really incredible job holding that together and actually reviving it. I would prefer to not be on this because of the scheduling issues.
Okay, so we need a new member and as alternate, are you willing to step up as member or?
I came in as the alternate because I was on it for three or four years, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm willing to share the wealth on this one.
Anybody want to step up as member Supervisor Arroyo?
Are you saying you don't want to be the primary on this one?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do it.
I'm sure that's why you got elected, because your perception is wonderful.
Reading between the lines, I think you're saying you'd like to share the wealth. Okay. So is it the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention one that, or both that you're hoping to make that transfer on? So the Fourth Thursday Conflicts with RCEA, so.
So you can do the second one, but not the first one?
I could do the second one, but not the first one, but it looks like there's the same people on both, which there may be some utility in it being the same people on both. Do those, yeah, I mean, so I'd be happy to serve in that other one unless the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council can change their meeting for me, which feels a little bit like a jerk move, but that would be the circumstances.
Because you have RCEA meetings every fourth.
RCEA can't change.
Every fourth Thursday?
Yes.
At the same time, 4 o'clock till 5:30 or whatever?
It's at 3:30, but.
But still runs over.
Usually quite long.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that you're willing to step in on the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission as the member, but that the other one has a conflict for you.
It does, and I'm curious, for those who have served on these, does it make sense for it to be the same person on both?
Yes, it does. I've served on both, but it's not necessary. They both have their agendas and what they're working on. Bottom line is that we have somebody participating regularly and, and involved, because as Mike said, Kelsey is just doing an amazing job, but she can't do it without members supporting.
And do those who have served on it believe that that council meeting, the one that happens on the fourth Thursday, could be moved? Or is it a large group and that's a very fixed date and time?
How about we leave it the way it is for today, but that Kathy, could you make contact with them and see? Mention that we, we've got a member who would like to serve on both, but there's a conflict with the first one on the fourth Thursday.
I will reach out to them.
Leave the, leave the members as they are now?
No, we would change the member to Arroyo for the Delinquency Prevention Commission, but we would leave Wilson as the member for the Justice Coordinating Council unless they can switch their time of meetings, in which case Supervisor Arroyo is willing to consider being the member for both, if I heard correctly.
That seems reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Sounds like a pathway forward there. Thank you Kathy for.
And, and mostly these meetings are very functional with relationship to the interdepartmental coordination that occurs in that space. So they're mostly informational for us because we're not at that staff level where people are really in the nitty gritty of doing those things. But I would say it is important to keep up on those things, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
And Rex, are you willing to stay as the alternate for both? Or? Okay.
Good deal, okay. So we've got one change and one, we're going to get more information. And if necessary, bring it back to the board at that point. Okay, next is the Klamath Basin Coordinating Committee, meets as needed. I don't know that we've ever met since I've been on this committee. Yeah, there's a lot going on in the Klamath, that's for sure, but not this committee. Supervisor Wilson?
I will say that that started before the current Klamath River Dam Removal Corporation even, you know, was a thing. And I would say that I don't know if we even need the coordinating committee, because currently Supervisor Arroyo has been, was, has been appointed to that body that I just mentioned, the Corporation by the governor some, two years ago or something like that. And so, three years ago, so we actually have representation.
On that part of it.
Yeah, I think we're covered personally.
So I'll give you a quick update. There's actually a couple of things going on in the Klamath now. One is the, one or two counties in Oregon, Klamath County, I believe it is, along with Siskiyou County, and Modock County have been organizing meetings to have kind of a cross-county effort to work on, trying to help provide input on direction of the restoration funding that's coming down into the Klamath. So they solicited my engagement. I talked with Hank Seaman about this and he said, well, they're not well-defined and maybe you want to attend some meetings and see if it seems worthwhile for us to be involved. So there's that one effort. In addition, the federal government has started a process of putting together a new Klamath Basin effort. I, I'm sorry, I've only been to one meeting for one hour. There's a meeting coming up in a, in a week or two. And I think we, I think I need to get more information on both of those and agenda is bringing that back to the board to have a discussion about what those two entities are doing in the Klamath. It's completely separate from the Restoration Corporation and the dam removal. One of them is being run by the federal government and it's got a lot of engagement, like 20 or 30, no, 15 members or so. So I would suggest that it'd be good for me to bring that back as an agenda item, give you more details on it and have the board weigh in on whether or not we want to be engaged in that or not, and if so, who they would like to represent the county on that. Does that sound like a good way to go?
Yeah, that would probably be good, because I've got the same. Jerry Byrne has reached out to me. Michael Colbself has, has, have reached out to me and asked if I will be on it, so.
Good, good. So let's do that. I'll get the information and bring it back, yes. Supervisor Arroyo?
I, I do just want to clarify that while I am an appointee, a gubernatorial appointee to the Klamath River Renewal Corporation, which is a nonprofit organization that's tasked with the removal of the dams and the administering of the restoration funding and projects, that is, that is similar to Supervisor Wilson's appointment to the Coastal Commission, the governor's appointment. Not, I'm not, you know, representing our county there, even though we are a signatory. So we are a signatory to the agreement when there are meetings about it. You know, typically, I think that's Hank Seaman who goes or other county staff. And, and I do think if we're going to have somebody representing, you know, the, the Klamath or its tributaries, the supervisor who's in that watershed makes the most sense, so I'm happy for you to stay in some role. But I just wanted to clarify that I'm not, you know, there as a county appointee. So I, I can, you know, share some of our views with the board, but, but I'm, you know, there as a nonprofit board member.
Gotcha. Thanks for that clarification. Yeah, and the signatories to the agreements that created the corporation and have been working on dam removal used to have meetings about once every six months. But once dam removal was approved and everything's moving forward, we haven't met since. So that's a third thing. Actually, it's a fourth thing. So there's four things going on. Corporation board you sit on as a governor appointment. The signatories to the agreement that hasn't met for a long time. And then these other two things that have kind of been, one of them's being driven by Siskiyou and Klamath County to a degree, but they want Humboldt and Del Norte, downriver counties involved as well. And the other one is something that the federal government's working on. So again, what I'll do is bring back information on those other two efforts. And Supervisor Bone, I'll, I'll confer with you as well, because you've been asked to be involved there. And we'll bring back, back to the board to be more informed and to make a decision about representation. Probably, maybe on both, maybe on only one, we'll see. Supervisor Bushnell?
So I'd hope that we were going to move along a little quicker, but could we get a five-minute break?
Yes, what time is it? A quarter till or? Yeah, it's 22. Let's take a five-minute break, please. Thank you. Member appointments list and, yeah, it is taking some time, so we'll try and pick up the pace. So far, we've all been very amenable, so that helps a lot. Well, that's part of the process. Letting go something's a big deal. All right, so the next one is Local Agency Formation Commission. Currently, we have Supervisor Bushnell and myself as members and we have Supervisor Wilson as alternate. I would like to continue to serve and I believe Supervisor Bushnell would like to.
I would.
And is there anybody else that's wanting to serve as member for LAFCO? Seeing none. And then our alternate there is Supervisor Wilson. Do you want to continue to serve there?
Yes.
Any other interest in LAFCO? All right, we've got LAFCO done. We're staying the same. Behavioral Health Board, we've got myself as the member, Supervisor Bushnell as the alternate. I've been doing it for five years. I love the work there, but if somebody wants the member seat, I'm more than willing to open that opportunity.
I'm willing to pass the alternate as well. I know, if I could say, sometimes you have conflicts and
Yep.
it's difficult for me, so I'm not, I haven't been able to attend the last two times you've asked me to.
I gave you a two-hour notice.
You did give me only two hours.
Yeah, that doesn't cut it, for sure.
Anyways, that's just my, you know.
And I've had to attend by Zoom several times, which you get two per year, because they meet monthly, so that's a two per year through the rules of being able to attend by Zoom and vote, but you can still attend without voting. All right, any other interests there? Supervisor Arroyo?
I, I'm willing to serve in that role. If, it, it sounds like you really like it, but do you foresee there being challenges with getting to that meeting?
I've had conflicts with attending the meetings, yes.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do it if that would be helpful. I, I, I'm kind of curious how big of a lift it is. I mean, that's a day that I go right to HCOG afterwards.
It's just the meeting. And it's always done by 2:15.
And Thursdays are not ideal for you, right?
I know, because I'm in Fort, that's my Fortuna Day that I.
Sure.
So maybe Supervisor Madron, would you be interested as the alternate?
Sure. I'll drop down to alternate and you're willing to be the member?
Yes. I'm looking at the time again, just making sure, 12:15, and that's, that's a pretty thick standing time.
It says 1:45, but they really finish by 2:00 or 2:15 every time. They've never gone past 2:15.
Okay.
Ever.
Yeah, I'd be happy to serve on that one.
Great, okay, so Supervisor Arroyo will be the member and I will be the alternate. Supervisor Bushnell is off. Okay, making note there. Naco, we already took care of that recently, I think, but maybe not. No, we didn't, okay. So Naco, currently we have Supervisor Bushnell as the member. We need to add that?
No, it just, I was left off. I'm the member.
So you're the member and she's the alternate, okay?
And I was just recently appointed as a vice chair of the Rural Action Caucus.
Well, you want to continue there then.
I do want to continue and then we will have Supervisor Gore from Sonoma County will be the chair next year. So that's going to be exciting times, I'm sure.
Absolutely, and three years from now, wow, that's on the, so, okay, so we're going to keep Supervisor Bone as the member and Supervisor Bushnell as the alternate. Any other comments there? Okay, we got that one done. Next is the North Coast Emergency Medical Services Governing Board. We've got Supervisor Bone as the member and Public Health Officer as the alternate. Any desire to change any of that?
I'm the chair. That's, you know, Humboldt Lake and Del Norte Counties, we've got to oversee the ambulance service and the emergency rooms.
We oversee the ambulance services and the emergency rooms and things like that.
So you guys meet as needed?
We actually meet three to four times a year, usually about three times a year. So we, and it's two times a year and then we try to get to Lake and, and, or Del Norte, so.
Okay, and I assume somebody's notified the new health officer that they're on this committee?
She shows up, so I think she's aware.
Sounds like that's working. All right, next we have the Great Redwood Trail Authority. We actually already did that. Those are two-year appointments and currently we have myself as a member and also Supervisor Bushnell as an alternate. But the second member that needs to be listed is Jeff Hunterlock, is the second member that this board appointed to the Great Redwood Trail. So we'll add that to the notes.
I don't remember that, actually.
We did it a year ago.
Yeah, okay.
It's a two-year appointment. Yeah, that's my memory.
Yeah, but he's a public member, so we appointed him as a public member.
Correct.
So I don't know if he goes on our sheet.
We have other people in here that are, well, you're right. I mean, I just thought for completeness, why not list him as a public member? Anyway, that's a minor detail.
Yeah.
I'll leave it to the clerk of the board to decide, but that's what we did a year ago. So that'll come up next year. REDEC, Redwood Region Economic Development Commission. Currently, we have Supervisor Arroyo as member, Supervisor Wilson as alternate. Are you both willing to continue to serve?
I am. I'd also be happy to change that up if someone's really excited about it.
Anybody else wanting a REDEC position?
Wilson is the alternate. Would he like the?
You want to switch, you want to?
No, I like being alternate.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I mean, I've done it a few times this year.
Yeah, this one, this is one where I've had to rely on my alternate a couple of times, but we've always had representation there. We've been able to pinch hit for each other.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, we got that one covered. RCRC, we already took care of that in October of this year. And Supervisor Bone is our member and Bushnell is our alternate. Sempervirans Joint Conference Committee, Supervisor Bone and myself are both members. We have usually only been meeting annually, but now we're going to be meeting quarterly, I believe, because there's a lot going on in that arena. Do you want to continue to serve Supervisor Bone? I'm fine too. Anybody else interested? Supervisor Wilson?
I'm not, well, let's just say, I'm interested in the subject matter. I'm glad you guys are doing this, but I, I, just a question as to, is there a nexus with facilities?
Yes.
Okay, and so I just want to make sure, well, it's fine that you're separated and you're doing that sort of thing, but we have to, we'll have to figure out a way to make sure that there isn't sort of a conflict with relationship to that and we can manage for that. I just want to highlight it and make sure that we.
I would recommend that the ad hoc set up a meeting with Emmy and Connie and have some discussions about what's going on in Sempervirans and what the future plans and hopes and dreams are for that whole thing.
And just make sure those are translated well to Public Works and CAO's office so that we can, okay, got it, thanks.
Okay, and the CAO's office would coordinate that ad hoc, I'm assuming, or?
And if you're going to get all those people together, I mean, I don't know if the behavioral health in Mad River comes into this or not, or, because that's going to be a big project also.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, RCRC, Golden State Finance and Connect, we made that choice in October. And that is Supervisor Bone as the member and Supervisor Bushnell as the alternate. We already made that decision. Oh, I'm sorry, I backed up there, didn't I? Sorry about that. St. Joseph Hospital Advocacy Committee, Supervisor Bone is the member on the alternate. Any changes there?
This used to be a lot more, a lot more active committee and I, I think I'll ask Ms. Shanahan what's going on with it, because it may be something we don't even do next year. I don't know. I would like, I mean, they are our primary healthcare company here, so I would love to, you know, have that, be back to being active, so.
Active or understand why it wouldn't be.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so you're going to go ahead and connect with them and follow up, okay? So we'll leave that as is. Now we're on our third page, which is much smaller. Transient Occupancy Tax Ad Hoc Working Group, formed April 26, 2022. We have Supervisor Bushnell and Wilson as members. Any changes there? Supervisor Wilson?
Through the chair, CAO, for, question for CAO. Is there, we'll just keep returning to this every time, every year when we get, in terms of the budget time and sort of make a recommendation, or is that, is that the expectation of how this functions?
Supervisor Bushnell?
So we have an agenda item coming this month and then we have a meeting set for January for, to, to speak about HLA. And I think that once we finish those discussions, that this ad hoc will be dissolved.
Thank you for that clarification. Is that how the CAO might see it? Is that how the CAO might see it?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Supervisor Arroyo?
I just have a bit of a process suggestion. There aren't very many ad hocs on here. In fact, I don't think any of the other ones on here are ad hocs. We do have a number of other ad hocs that aren't listed. Could I just suggest that we take this off if it's just an ad hoc?
Supervisor Bushnell?
I also, so our board appoints the ad hocs, and so I was curious just why they were coming as well.
Through the chair, this was one of the first ad hocs that was created by the current board that we have. We have a completely separate list of just ad hocs. We will remove it from this list and put it on the other ad hoc list.
That'd be great, and please distribute that list to all of us, like you always do.
We will do that.
Yeah, thank you so much for that update. Okay, so we're moving on from that one. Next is the Humboldt Transit Authority, and we have Supervisor Wilson and Arroyo as members, myself as an alternate. Willingness to continue to serve? Any other interest in this one? Seeing none, all three of us will continue to serve there in the positions we currently have. Next is the Northwest California Resource Conservation and Development Council, which we had a meeting last week. Supervisor Bone?
Can I, on the Waste Management Authority, can we make sure?
Oh, wait, we're not there yet.
Oh, I thought you just said.
No, we're on the Northwest.
Northwest Resource Partnership, which is right below Waste Management.
No, I said Northwest California Resource Conservation.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
The RCND, that we were both in the meeting last week, but I ended up, my connection dropped me out. But you stayed there, and it was great to have you there as alternate, thank you. So do you want to continue the same? Do you want to step up as member?
That's fine.
You want to be a member or stay the same?
Either way.
Okay, all right.
Whatever works for you.
Supervisor Arroyo, you're the second alternate. It's the only place we have a second alternate. Oh, no, we have another place coming up.
I'm happy to stay as the second alternate.
Continue, okay. All right, so we'll leave that as is then. That one stays the same. Next is the Trinity River Basin Fish and Wildlife Subcommittee. I don't think we've met in a long time, but we need to be, as on the Trinity Management Council, but we're not. So currently Supervisor Wilson and myself are members, but it hasn't met since I've been on the board. So that might be another one, just like the EAL one, that is it really, is this something we should continue to be? I mean, does even this subcommittee exist anymore? I don't know, so I guess, who would be a contact? If you can let me know who the contacts are for this particular one, I'll find out if this thing is needed or not, because five years it hasn't met. And again, I think what we want to be on is the Trinity Management Council. That's a different matter, not on our list, so Kathy, please give me the contact info, and I'll check on that. Okay, next is the Waste Management Authority. Supervisor Bone served there for many years. I've been the member the last year or two, and Rex is, Supervisor Bone is the first alternate, Bushnell the second alternate. Any interest in changing that up? We're in the middle of the whole organics processing, collection process, and other things like that, but what's the board feeling on that one? Supervisor Bushnell?
Are you happy as the member?
I am. I missed a couple of meetings, and I didn't actually contact my alternate in that case, because it happened at the last moment for me. But I'm willing to continue to serve, but I know that Supervisor Bone's done a great job there over the years as well.
I also have interest if, you know, maybe, anyways, I also have interest here.
Okay.
So I just don't know how you are feeling.
I, I don't have a problem. I bet, you know, I'm involved with this with RCRC, too. I just need a commitment that we have.
Attending.
This is one of the ones that are so important that we have, we are, this is a big, we are the largest footprint, and the decisions being made could cost us dearly, and we do need to be in attendance, and I.
Agreed.
This is really weird. I watch a lot of the meetings, and we've been absent more than a couple meetings, so, and I've never got, I've never got, I've never got the phone calls, so.
Yeah.
And by the time I'm watching, I'm not going to run down there and say. So if you can make the commitment that you're going to be at the meetings, I don't have a problem, because I think, you know, like you said, you have a great interest in that, as I do, but I just, I just need the commitment that the county is represented. I don't care who's on there, I just need to make sure we're there.
Yeah, and I missed two meetings, and the other ones you think I missed, I was in Zoom and used my two meetings up for voting. It doesn't show, yeah, yeah. At any rate, I'm willing to continue serving. I have missed a couple of meetings. I absolutely, I was wondering if this was one of the ones you were talking about at the beginning of our discussion here. Supervisor Bushnell also has an interest. Do you want to step up as member, Supervisor Bushnell?
I would.
Okay, and Supervisor Bone continues as the first alternate, and I would go to the second alternate. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Any concerns, Public Works Director? Nope, as long as we have representation there as Supervisor Bone has discussed, and I have had difficulties making those meetings.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to switch that up, and we're going to have Supervisor Bushnell as the member, and I will shift to the second alternate. And Supervisor Bone will be the first alternate. Okay, that takes care of the Waste Management Board. Next is the North Coast Resource Partnership, and we have a lot of meetings, it seems like, and a lot of expense traveling. Supervisor Bone and myself are the members. Supervisor Arroyo is the alternate. Is there an interest in continuing serving from me? Yes. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, last year was my first year, and I think I hit all the meetings. I don't think I missed any meetings. I'm kind of silly that way.
Yeah.
But I enjoyed working with Karen and the whole team, and Leaf and everybody, and yeah, I would love to continue.
Okay, and Supervisor Arroyo, your interest level?
I'm happy to serve as the alternate. I think this one could pose some conflicts with clamor-related meetings. It did at least once this year, so anyway, I think I'm, I'm happy to continue to serve as the alternate, and if I need to go for someone, I will make that happen.
Okay, so it sounds like we're keeping that all the same. Next is Workforce Development Board. Supervisor Bushnell is the member, and Supervisor Bone is the alternate. Continue?
Yeah, I do have a conflict once in a while, but then I also have let Supervisor Bone know, and he fills in for me. I'm happy to stay.
Okay, well, that one's going to stay the same, and I think there's only one more on our final page. And we have our time set good. Airline Recruitment Subcommittee, Wilson and Arroyo as the members. Stay the same?
We haven't met, so I'm happy to stay in our astronaut positions, as Supervisor Bone indicated.
Good job, guys. You only lost one last year.
Okay. We are complete with that process, and.
It wasn't me, I swear.
Any questions, clerk of the board? Okay, great, and we're all good on finishing that up? Great job, everybody, thank you.
Chair Madron, we need a vote or a motion?
Of course, before we have a motion to approve everything we just did. So we'll go to those in Zoom first, and we have no hands up in Zoom. We'll go to those here in, no, we didn't, not on this, because we didn't have anything to comment on yet. Public comment, welcome.
I really appreciate the process and how it's gone so smoothly amongst all of you. That's a really good thing. We don't, none of you folks, people need to understand that a supervisor job, probably less than half of it's in the chamber, and the other half's going to all these other meetings. A lot of people need to understand that time it takes and dedication. I do, and appreciate you serving on all these things. We have, none of you that I recall, I would refer to as a placeholder. In Blue Lake, we have a, we have a city council member by the name of Chris Edgar, and he shows up at less than half of the meetings, and he, the safety committee meeting he was supposed to be on, it's been eight meetings, never notified his alternate, and they finally got a little irritated, so he showed up for half the meeting last night. So I strongly support what you folks are doing here and how you handle this, and it's gone very smoothly. I will, I will limit my time to one minute to comment on this, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments on this item? I'm going to give an update on our timeline for the public hearing and other things here in a minute or so, but if you have comments on this particular set of appointments, please step forward.
Yes, I'm not sure I understood what you just said. My name's James Chaffey.
So this is an opportunity to comment on all these appointments you just made, that's all.
Yes, I hope my comments will be considered relevant.
Okay.
If they're not, you know, sometimes irrelevant comments happen.
It's okay, it's your opportunity.
It's within the scope of, you know, government process.
Welcome, sir.
What can I tell you? This is a list of appointments for yourselves. It's providential that earlier in your agenda, I think it's D4, you have a list of appointments from the public.
You'll notice that the Board of Trustees of the Law Library is on neither list.
Now, according to state law, the chair of this Board of Supervisors serves on that Board of Trustees. In 2022, you appointed someone with a resolution, but whether you're changing past practice or following state law, the public should at least be informed of where that appointment's going to come from. And this is especially concerning, because everything connected to the Library Board of Trustees, the Law Library Board of Trustees is underground and secretive. Thank you, and I hope, as I say, was that relevant?
You made the comment connect to what we're doing right now, as well as connecting to that other list that was in the consent, and you're fine. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, and Supervisor?
I would, I will, we have, and I think the CAO was going to say something, we have, I've served on that a couple times, and I'm not sure, at one time for a few years, and then I think we put a public member in that place. Was that?
There are a number of appointments that your board makes to the Board of Trustees, and that comes through its own separate and distinct item at the last board meeting in December.
Okay, so that'll be coming up. Look forward to it. Okay, any other comments on this particular set of appointments we're making? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion that we accept the changes and the appointments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and go to our voting tabs. I see no more discussion. Everybody vote? Yep.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, great, and then I want to make a quick announcement on our timing for the rest of the day. My apologies for the fact that the public hearing, we didn't get it time-set, and I've talked to our planning director about how to correct that in the future. I'll have, ask him to come up, but basically, the way things are going right now, we have a time set that was at 11 o'clock, and it's now 11:10, and that's for a closed-session item with some outside counsel, so we need to get to that. And then we have two time sets at 11 for evaluations of two department heads, which we're actually going to be picking up at 1 o'clock after we take a lunch break. So we're going to do the closed session on the outside counsel item, the potential litigation item, right off the bat. Then we're probably going to, we're going to take a lunch break. We're going to continue in closed session at 1 o'clock with the evals for the department heads, and then we will be back here at sometime between 1:30 and 2:30. We also have a time set at 2:30 for the Measure Z discussion, which will probably take more than an hour. Might take an hour and a half, could take two hours. I hope it doesn't. And so my best guess right now for the public hearing is that we will pick that up sometime between 3:30 and 4:30. More than likely, it will probably be about 4 o'clock, somewhere between 4 and 4:30. So I apologize to those who are here in the audience, for the applicant and others in the public that wanted to be able to sit here, and you're sitting through our entire meeting, but at this point, you're going to get a couple-hour break, and I, we're going to try and fix this in future hearings, but Director Ford, please.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry for the interruption, but I did want to provide you with a possible alternative, which would be to continue that public hearing to the meeting of the 12th, and then you wouldn't have that stress of having to go into that at the very end of the day. We have discussed that with the applicant and the appellant. They're amenable to that.
Well, I think we ought to go ahead and grab that, but we got to do public comment on it, even if it is continued. How are we doing outside counsel's waiting, but five more minutes, we're good? Okay, let's go ahead and do that, and at least that's one way to kind of correct things for the applicant and others, rather than waiting around for four or five hours to have this hearing. So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the appeal of the Planning Commission decision to deny a conditional use permit for 22,000 square feet, existing outdoor cannabis cultivation on a 90-acre parcel, and a special permit to reduce the setback to the BLM public land. So we're going to open the public hearing and take comment, and I believe there is going to be a motion that is being suggested to continue this hearing. So, yes, Supervisor Bone?
Can I get a clarification for both the appellate and the applicant? If they speak today, they will be able to speak again on the 12th? If it's a different statement, or how are you going to handle that?
I would recommend, if I could, through the chair, that you limit comment today on the continuance unless people can't be here next week, and then they need to exercise their right to comment today on the actual hearing.
Okay, we'll make it so. So if, just to clarify, so if you can't make it on January, what is it?
December 12.
December 12. That's the meeting we're considering continuing it to, a week away. If you cannot make that meeting, now's a good time to make comment on this continued hearing. Otherwise, you might want to hold your comments until that hearing. Anybody want to speak on this item at this time? Welcome.
Apparently, there's nobody in Zoom. I support the continuance and appreciate the willingness of the people to allow this to go on so we don't have to sit here late in the day. I concur that late decisions frequently are not the best decisions made from the dais, and so I strongly support that policy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Okay, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to continue till December 12.
Second.
Do we want to time-set it possibly?
We will.
Thank you.
Well, although it's only a week out, can you public notice the time set?
Yeah.
You can, you can continue it to a time set.
We can, very good, because this was noticed properly, okay.
Right.
All right, good, so we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Wilson, and final comments?
We need to.
You would need to specify the time.
Yeah.
Oh, for the time set?
Yes.
What would you recommend?
If I were to be selfish, but I don't know what else is on the agenda.
Be selfish, please. What would you like?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Thank you.
We can make that happen, okay.
So my motion would include that we time-set it for 10 a.m.
Okay, very good. And the seconder, in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have motion in a second. Let's, lost your voting thing? Okay. Yes, correct. Time set to 10 o'clock on the 12th. There we go. Bam, bam, bam.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, great, and thank you very much, applicant and appellant, for working with us on that. Appreciate that. So we are going to read into the record the three closed-session items and take public comment on that, and then we will adjourn until approximately 1:30 to 2:30. 2:30, yes, recess till 2:30, thank you.
We only have the one time set left.
Yep, yeah, it got simplified, okay. County Council?
Thank you, Chair Madron. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9, D4, in order to discuss the initiation of litigation in one potential case. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee performance evaluations for the positions of the Director of Child Support Services and the Library Director.
Great, thank you very much for that. We'll take public comment on these closed sessions, nothing in Zoom, so we'll go to those in the audience here today. Welcome. Nothing in Zoom, so we'll go to those in the audience here today, welcome.
Very briefly on Item G1, this is anticipated litigation initiation. I believe there's been on here repeated times, I've been assured by your counsel that should you initiate the litigation at that time, we will be advised of its content. If you do initiate that during this process, the public would appreciate your detailing that as far as why we're suing somebody or who we're suing, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you commenter, anybody else? Okay, we are in recess till approximately 2:30 for our time set. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Eric, you good, yep, Nikki? You good, okay. All right, we are back in session, and we'll have a report out from our closed session. County Council.
Thank you Chair Madron, there was no reportable action taken with regard to Items G1 through G3.
Great, thank you very much, and we only have one item left on our agenda at this point, and that is the Measure Z considerations from the ad hoc recommendation and discussion at the Board. So Sean, please take it through it.
All right, thank you Chair Madron. Sean Quincy, Deputy County Administrative Officer, I'm here with fellow Deputy CIO Jessica McHale. This item is a report back to your Board, which follows a June item where your Board directed an ad hoc to come up with a percentage-based allocation methodology for Measure Z revenues. I have a short presentation to go through some of the high-level outlines of the recommendation and a couple alternatives. And so, after we do that, then we can go ahead and open it up to discussion.
Great, sounds good. Doesn't want to go into slideshow mode, huh? Do we need to pay our dish bill?
There we go.
Awesome.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries.
All right, so quickly, a overview of how we got here. Back in fiscal year 2223, the budget was adopted with a projected $14.3 million in revenue and $3.2 million in additional funding. That was carryforward funding, unspent funding and revenue that came in above projection in the prior two years. If you'll remember, that was a result of cleanup of the books that happened over the last couple of years due to our significant accounting issues. In fiscal year 2223, because of the additional funding that was available, your Board, or the Board, awarded all the Measure Z projects, which included 16 new county positions. However, as fiscal year 2223 progressed, staff downgraded the revenue projections down to $12.6 million, which was a significant reduction in revenue. That led to fiscal year 2324. Typically, every year, the county in Measure Z has between $1 to $2 million in carryforward funding, that's unspent funding from the prior year. But in fiscal year 2324, that was not the case. County staff projected only $12.6 million in revenue that year, and that led to a significant tightening of the belt. County staff, the county staff positions ended up eating up about 90% of the allocations for Measure Z in the current year. However, your Board did take action after receiving some feedback from the Measure Z Committee. Your Board de-allocated eight county positions, which decreased the pressure on Measure Z. The Measure Z Committee also recommended to your Board that the county move back to its historic allocation pattern of 67% of all available funding should go to county departments. That 67% number, there's two numbers that have been floating around, 67% and 80%. The 67% number is the ongoing revenue plus the carryforward funding. But for these projections, we're using 80%, because that's a more solid number that we can project. And that is 80% of ongoing revenue. And as I stated earlier, your Board chose an ad hoc committee to come up with percentage-based funding allocations for Measure Z. That ad hoc committee was comprised of Supervisors Wilson and Supervisor Bushnell, and this is their recommendation.
And it includes members of the Measure Z Committee as well?
The, no, the Measure Z Committee developed their own ad hoc to come up with separate recommendations.
Okay, that was my confusion.
And before we get into the numbers, I do want to provide some basis for the methodology that we came up with. As I said, we chose the 80% of ongoing revenue. We are assuming conservatively $12.5 million. So all of these allocations are based against that $12.5 million fixed revenue figure for the next three years. The Measure Z Committee recommended that your Board get back to that number by fiscal year 2627, recognizing that changes in allocations do have a lot of staff impact, and so wanted to provide kind of a runway for your Board to get to that number. And the expenditures that you'll see and that are in your Board's packet, they are based on current staffing levels, the projected need. Based on current staffing levels, we assumed a basic 5% increase in salaries and benefits and 5% increase in cost allocation plan charges. Also, the recommendations would provide partial funding for county departments that have five staff or more. The logic there is that those departments can absorb any gap in funding through vacancies. But departments with four staff or fewer, it makes it a lot more challenging. And so, the, all of the recommendations provide full funding for those small departments with four staff or fewer. And so, as you're looking at the recommendations, these are some of the decision points. The MIST program, your Board will want to consider whether or not to continue funding the MIST positions. Those positions are about $425,000 in salary and benefit costs for fiscal year 2425. That's what we're projecting, and that climbs to about $468,000 by the end of the plan period, which is fiscal year 2627. And your Board may want to consider directing staff to seek replacement funding for the MIST program. Right now, the MIST program is operating on a grant through the end of the calendar year, but after that grant runs out, they will be using Measure Z funding for those staff. Your Board may also want to consider alternate ways to fund the road brush cutting crew. Last, I believe it was last meeting, your Board decided to pursue a revenue measure, potential road tax to go on the ballot in November. Your Board may want to consider using that pot of funding to fund the road brush cutting crew if that measure is passed. And again, those considerations around county expenditures, your Board may want to consider providing partial funding to small departments or increasing or decreasing allocations to large departments. Finally, the staff have, through closing the books on, or as we progress to close the books on fiscal year 2223, we believe there's about $3 million in fund balance available in Measure Z. And your Board may want to choose to use that funding over the next several years in order to move the county towards that goal of 80% of revenue available. And finally, with outside agencies, your Board may want to consider increasing or decreasing allocations or adding other agencies to these set allocations. And just a final note, this, these proposals are, again, based on a $12.5 million allocation plan. These would provide the set allocations for the next three years. Any revenue that comes in above $12.5 million would be available for the Measure Z Committee to recommend to your Board. So the $12.5 million is the baseline, it is not the ceiling for Measure Z. And on to the recommendation, this is Option 1, this is the Measure Z ad hocs recommendation. The recommendation would continue allocating all 83 county positions to county departments. That would include the roads brush cutting crew and the four MIST staff. Those, the roads brush cutting crew and the MIST staff were allocated in fiscal year 2223 when there was that glut of money available there. In terms of measurables, it would provide $11.26 million to county in fiscal year 2425, and that would grow to $11.37 in fiscal year 2627. $90 million of that $12.5 million, or 90% of that $12.5 million would go to the county, up to about 91% by the end of the plan period, that is if nothing changes. In order to meet the 80% mark, we would need about $1.6 million in additional revenue each year. Again, the allocations to large departments, as you'll see in your Board packet, they are set right now to meet nearly the staff obligations or that the staff need, but then those allocations would remain flat for the next three years. And the county shortage in funding would be $198,000 in fiscal year 2425, but by fiscal year 2627, there would be a $1.25 million projected shortfall in Measure Z. Those large departments would need to either reduce services, reduce staff, or transfer some of those expenditures to their other budget units, or find additional funding to continue funding the staff that are in those budget units now. Additionally, with the first option, for outside agencies, the agencies that are receiving funding this year would receive funding that are near their funding levels this year. Again, that would be guaranteed funding. There would still be additional funding hopefully available for those agencies to apply for if revenue is coming above $12.5 million. And your Board, again, could consider directing staff to find replacement funding for MIST, the road tax option again, and again with the fund balance. There's $3 million available that your Board could choose to reserve for the next couple of years. We place a million dollars in allocation, available allocation for 2425 in each of the next three years in order to move the county towards that goal. Or any combination thereof. Option 2 would essentially be the same, but it would de-allocate the four MIST staff. That would pull the county's funding down to $10.8 million. Remember, the first, the first option has it at $11.26 million, so it's about a $400,000 difference there. And by fiscal year 2627, it's $10.9 million, it moves the county to 86% of that $12.5 million mark, so it's moving closer to that 80, 80% mark there. We would need an additional $1 million per year in revenue to get to that 80%, 80% mark. And again, allocations to large departments would be set this year and would remain flat over the next three years. County shortage would be $170,000 next year, as, in total, growing to $1.17 million in fiscal year 2627. Again, these additional pieces that would go with this recommendation, three outside agencies would receive funding at or near the levels that they're getting now. FIRE would be the fourth agency, and they would receive a greater share due to the reduction in county allocations there. So they would be guaranteed roughly a million dollars per year under this scenario. And again, revenues above $12.5 million would be available for allocation to these agencies, outside agencies. I will note also that the Measure Z Committee in May took action that they would, that they're going to adopt a stance that they will not recommend any more new county positions to your Board for funding with Measure Z. Again, with the MIST and the road tax, direct staff to seek funding, and your Board could consider using the road tax funding if it's passed for the roads brush cutting crew, and same options there with the fund balance available. And Option 3 is basically status quo. Right now, your Board's practice is to fund county staff, fully fund county staff that has been allocated through Measure Z. This would include the roads brush cutting crew, the MIST program. The total county funding would be $11.4 million this year, growing to $12.6 million in fiscal year 2627. And that leaves a little bit of funding left in fiscal year 2425 for outside agencies, those four agencies, agencies that receive funding this year. However, FIRE would, in this scenario, I believe, receive a little bit under $400,000 next year. And then in 2526, in this scenario, there would be only $484,000 projected available of that $12.5 million. And this scenario did not allow staff to kind of present options where it would provide fixed allocations to outside agencies. But again, there's that fund balance issue where your Board could choose to go with this option and spread that fund balance over the next couple of years. Here's a comparison of what those three options look like. Option 1 has the county at 90% of funding, growing a little bit each year. Option 2 is 86%, and then Option 3 grows and exceeds that $12.5 million conservative revenue estimate. And here is a summary of those three options. Again, Option 1 is to fund the four MIST positions, a little over $400,000 per year for those staff. Fund the roads brush cutting crew, and then consider whether or not you would want to fund that with a road tax if it is implemented, and use a portion of that fund balance over the next two to three years to smooth out and get the county towards that goal. Option 2 is de-allocate the MIST positions at the end of this fiscal year, and same options with the road brush cutting crew and the fund balance. And Option 3 is basically status quo. So that is my short presentation. We're available here to answer questions, and I know that we have a lot of interested stakeholders here as well.
Great, thank you very much, and I imagine that Jessica, you were very involved in all these numbers as well.
We have, we have a spreadsheet here in case your Board wants to play with numbers. But before we, before we break out the spreadsheet, I believe it's more important to hear your Board's priorities, which services you want to fund. Again, we can fiddle with numbers on, on the screen here. I think the guidance that we are seeking from your Board is, what are your priorities at this point with Measure Z?
Great, thank you very much, and I very much appreciate the work of the ad hoc. And with that, I'll go to one of our ad hoc members, Supervisor Bushnell.
I'm going to ask a general question, not discuss what the ad hoc talked about. So Supervisor Bone was before me.
Okay, Supervisor Bone.
And then I'll go.
Has it, I mean, knowing how big DHHS is, and most of it is state and federal throughput funding, have we sat down with the appropriate people there to see if any of these houseless, homeless, the people in need could be funding through, some of these funding through the MIST program? Because that's basically what we're doing, is going out and getting people and connecting them with services. Rather than come through, most of our funding for a lot of that stuff comes through state and federal. Are there state and federal funds available for this, or have we talked to Connie about this? Because we've mentioned. Because we've mentioned de-allocating the MIST thing and then seeing if there's other funding. There always seems to be other funding, especially on the state and federal side, but is there anything we can do to push that envelope so we can get those kind of grants and get that 485 back working? Yeah, it's, it's working for the county now. I'm not saying that, but there, there's a bigger pile out there that's helping pay for this stuff.
I don't want to speak for Director Beck, but we did have, we did have conversations with Director Beck and Sheriff Hansel about the MIST program and its interaction with the sheriff's office. And the grant that is funding the current MIST positions is going to run out at the end of the calendar year. I don't believe that they've identified funding that could replace it at this point. That's part of the reason for the recommendation, to fund those positions for a couple of years while they go and continue seeking funding that could replace that program or find some different method to deliver those services.
Okay. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. And just, I'll just reiterate that we did meet with Sheriff Hansel and we met with Director Beck about both of those scenarios. My question is about, and Sean asked you to bring a chart that we could work with because allocating the $1 million to FIRE has, is well below what they've asked for and have been funded in the past. And so I, I wanted to talk to the board or have the board also consider that we could do maybe percentage-based. One thing about the FIRE is that they don't have a set amount of monies that they get, and so they're not able to apply for grants or match grants because they always have to apply for the funding, and that's been problematic for them. And then also for the sheriff's department, you know, we're going to de-allocate, not de-allocate, but we're going to flatten them out, and the, our board needs to know that, you know, they're going to come to the general fund for that, and they, and that is where the, the shortfall is going to come from, is the general fund. So in our discussions today, we need to consider that as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other board members at this point? Supervisor Wilson?
I just wanted to hear from the public on their opinions about these options, but I do appreciate us getting to this point. I did speak with Supervisor Bushnell just for a moment before we came in here, and she was talking about this issue with relationship to the FIRE districts wanting to make sure that there was allocation specifically enumerated so that when they're applying for matching funds. And we've talked about this in the past, not just about FIRE, but in general, having a matching fund fund as part of this so that community organizations could apply for funds that, that would have that matching element to it. But I think this would be very much more specific is what Supervisor Bushnell was talking about, which is something just specifically allocated as matching funds so that there is a guarantee that at least if they get the grant, the money is really there, that they're not like getting the grant and then making the request. That's, it just, it's a bit of a side note. I get that. And then the part about the, the MIST positions that we're talking about, the four MIST positions, that's not the entire MIST program, as, or is it just what's left of the MIST program?
So that is what is left of the MIST program?
Right. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Because with the MIST program was eight positions.
Correct.
Got it? Thanks for the reminder. Okay.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you, and I appreciate you having the attachment of the Measure Z positions and the salary cost by department. And when I was looking at it, it appeared that, so we're projecting to be, you know, reasonable $12.5 million per year through this kind of planning period. And when I added up the total in '26, '27, so the highest cost year for positions, I still only got to about $11.7, $11.8 million, which would mean there'd be between $700,000 and $800,000 if, you know, the $12.5 million holds, which is all projection. But if that were to be the case, that would be very similar to, can you help me understand that a little bit better? Is that, is that accurate? That we would, we would then be looking at a remainder of between half a million and a million for allocation?
So each, each department has their overhead costs. And so that's what, that's what that difference is. The, you know, $11.7 million in total salaries, and then there's an additional $700,000, $800,000 in overhead cost that would get us above, I think, $12.6 million in fiscal '26, '27.
Okay. Thank you. Because I was not understanding, like, we're still, we've still got this little bitty remainder. So that's not included here, those costs, overhead costs that are charged to Measure Z?
Those overhead costs are included within that projected need column there. So there's two costs. There's the salary cost, which is one attachment, but that projected need cost is higher than the salary cost because it includes those overhead costs. I just didn't want to give your board some gigantic, huge spreadsheet. It's huge enough as it is. So that's, that's what that is.
And that's a 10%-ish, is that?
I believe it, it works out to around 4% to 5% total.
Okay. 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 I will correct my own thinking. There was something that I wasn't, wasn't adding up in my own mind, but, so we would essentially by '26, '27 exceed, if we were to fully fund all these positions and the overhead, we would exceed our budget for Measure Z unless revenues magically get much bigger.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I've got a quick question and then a suggestion. All funding versus revenues, all funding include that balance, the fund balance?
That's correct.
That's the difference. Okay. Great. Thanks for that. On this one, I'm going to ask Tom to come up, if he could, to the podium. As far as roads, I mean, there's a lot of need with roads, tremendous amount of need, and it's truly a public safety issue. I will say I get more calls about roads than anything, and in regards to roads, mostly what I get is about the brush. Yes, potholes are high on the list as well and other things, but the, the brush is a huge deal. And I've been thinking a lot about this in my term here on the board, and most of our roads are easements. The vast majority of our roads in the county are easements over private property. Some of them we have fee title to, but most of them are easements. I don't know if you know what percentage or just rough?
Not off the top of my head.
More than half of our roads are easements.
Most likely.
That would be fair to say. Okay. And we've, when we think about FIRE and the threat to public safety that that presents, there's three primary sources of starts. One is lightning. We don't have a Superman shield yet. And two is downed power lines. Well, we got the PSPS, and that's helping, but we have a long way to go there with hardening our systems. And the third is roadside starts from vegetation, cigarettes, chains dragging, et cetera. And when it gets to be five, six feet tall, because we simply don't have the budget to really do it well, even with this road crew, then it's not as clean of a job, and it still presents lots of hazards in, in the ditches and the culvert inlets to flooding and, and blockage and things like that. And it presents hazards for people walking on those roads, you know, pedestrians and bicyclists, and the visibility for drivers and the rest of it. So I've been looking at our county roads a lot, and I've got a lot of them in my district. There are other districts with a lot. And I noticed that for those parcels that front the county roads that are small, a vast majority of those landowners actually maintain the vegetation on their frontage. You know, not everybody, but a lot of them do. Whereas the longer your lineage of footage on the county road and/or the more property owned, the less likely it is that you're going to tend to all that frontage on your property. And I've often been asking myself, and others are asking me, well, whose responsibility is it to maintain this vegetation along the county roads? And if a redwood tree falls its significant size, guess whose tree it is? It's the private landowners, right? Because it has value. But if it's just brush and alders and willows or whatever, whose responsibility is it? Traditionally, the county has taken on that responsibility. But given our lack of funding for our roads as a whole, I would really love to think about other ways to raise revenues for the, the vegetation maintenance rather than taking it away from whatever road tax we might pass in November, which is still, we don't know, you know, on where the voters are going to go with such a thing. And there's going to be a lot of competition on the November ballot. And I'd rather not deplete that. I'd like to keep that fund for road maintenance, paving, potholes, all the other things that need to happen. If we could develop a separate pot of money for roadside vegetation, wow, wouldn't that be a wonderful thing as far as fire starts, public safety, and all the rest of it? So we do currently have, I think you mentioned there is an ordinance for visibility or something related to vegetation. What is that?
We have a visibility ordinance on, on intersections and corners, yes.
Intersections and corners. So we could potentially expand that ordinance. You know, most cities have what's called a low, a low Joe ordinance, for lack of better terms, where if you have property in a city and you don't maintain it, the city will tell you, you need to cut the brush, or we're going to come in and cut it and then bill you for it. Right? So what if we set up a system on the county roads on the easements where we don't own the property? And we asked for those landowners to maintain their frontage, and if they didn't and didn't have it done by June 15th of the year when the fire season's beginning, that we would bill them per linear foot of frontage that they have, based on maybe some density of vegetation, inland's different than on the coast, things like that. It's just that I started thinking, whose responsibility really is this? Is it not the landowner's responsibility to maintain that? You know, it could be a very big discussion. I'm not looking for that today. But I just wanted to suggest that I think we need to look at a number of ways to raise revenues for roads. Because even if a road measure is successful in November, it's still going to be, it's more than a drop of them in the bucket, but it's still a small amount towards our deferred maintenance, which is in the tens of millions, and our ongoing need. So I would love to see if we could generate some other funds to maintain the vegetation. And frankly, the vast majority of the voters don't have frontage on the county roads. The vast majority do not. Only a small portion do. So it would probably be a very easy thing to do, but not as a ballot measure. It could be an ordinance change, right? We could, we could expand our existing ordinance potentially to cover something like this?
We would have to research that, and I'm not sure of anybody that does that. It, that's a political decision at this point. You know, my, my concern is telling people we're spending their ballot measure money before we even have a ballot measure passed. This was the number one project the year it was formed. Public Works has historically reduced our requests every, almost every year to come in line with the revenue that's there. Many of the other agencies have not, some have. So I, I would just ask at this time until such future changes, funding sources could be made, that you commit to holding this crew solid with Measure Z funding. We have already leveraged hundreds of thousands of dollars of CAL FIRE money, and they are really focused on not just the roadside vegetation, but fire hazard reduction, helping communities save themselves. So my plea here today is to keep these in Measure Z, not put this on the table for discussion. If some future ordinance change or something else happens, great. But again, I cannot afford these positions right now in the road crew. We just, to be competitive, we just gave our operators a raise. I had to freeze three positions in order to fund those other positions. I don't have people to backfill or funds in the road fund to backfill this.
Yeah. No, I get that. And I, if it was confusing, I'm not suggesting removing the funding that is here in front of us for the road crew. I absolutely agree with you. I'm thinking more long-term, not anything we do today, but just trying to think outside the box as far as revenue generation for this kind of thing out into the future. And, you know, it also...
County Council has his...
Yes. Go ahead.
With regard to items like that pertaining to long, long-term solutions and other things, I think we can actually direct staff to bring a, an item back at a future date to discuss those items. Because if we're not talking about...
Understood.
About things that are on today, then we should...
Understood. I'll keep it to the agenda topic. Thank you very much. And along those lines, I mean, I think the road crew's doing an amazing job trying to accomplish a tremendous amount of work with very limited resources. But it's absolutely true that, you know, as fire starts get to be more and more, insurance is becoming very difficult for people to even acquire. So there's all these other domino effects that, so I'm absolutely supportive of maintaining this road crew for the brushing. I just want to think outside the box out into the future. So that was my comments.
And that, as Counsel said, if you direct me to come back with a, something like, you know, I'm more than well, you're my boss. I will come back with something. But I just want to make sure that we don't lose out on Measure Z for our brush cutting crew and don't start spending money we don't have.
Yeah, and it may very well be wise to not even bring this forward until after the November measure, a year from now, so that we can stay focused on one thing at a time and not confuse the voters. But anyway, thank you for that. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you, Tom. I know you're invited up to talk about the importance of those positions, and since we were also talking about the MIST positions, and I know Connie's online, I wanted to see if we could give her the floor for a few moments to just share anything she might want to share about the importance of those positions, too. Thank you very much, Tom. Is that okay through the chair?
That sounds good. As an extiff, yes.
I know she's on Zoom, so I didn't have any, well, I guess, I'd love to hear your thoughts, Connie, and, you know, hear kind of what that program has, has done to decrease the burden of these challenges on, on law enforcement and partnering with law enforcement. I know that, you know, this has historically been a really important program, so I was just hoping you could speak to some of that.
Connie, you've got the floor.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so we are looking at our mobile crisis benefit through CAL AAM to start and be available as of January 2024. Because we just did the cut, cut over to CAL AAM, I would like to ask that we continue funding the MIST program through June 30th, 2024. I do have Paul Bignacki, the, the deputy for behavioral health on the line, too, that can ask, who can answer any other questions. I was just sending you an email saying, I have to go, but I, I have staff available on the line to be able to answer other questions and just know that you don't have to direct us to look for other funding. We've been searching for other funding and know that Measure Z is, you know, important to the community and others, and, and we do the best we can to, to fund our own programs without Measure Z or others. So, yeah, so let me know if you have other questions.
All right. Thank you, Connie. Any questions for Connie before she has to leave? Okay, let's go ahead and go to Paul. Paul, you've got the floor if you'd like to add any details.
Hi, everybody. No, I don't have any other details. If you have questions, I could answer. The mobile crisis benefit is a new benefit, and we don't need matching dollars to bill down that Medi-Cal, so that's definitely going to be advantageous for us moving forward with, with our mobile response teams, MIST in particular.
Great. Thank you, Paul, for being here. Any questions for Paul at this time? Seeing none? Okay. So at this point, it sounds like the board would like to hear from the public and those that have gathered here today. And we are at three minutes, again, time for public comment. So, but first, I wanted to check in with the Measure Z committee chair. Did you have comments that you would like to offer first up, or?
The committee chair is not present, I don't believe. Ginger is the current committee chair. I'm the past chair.
Okay. Okay. Good enough. So we're just going to go through and ask everybody that wants to speak, come on up. And I don't have any hands up in the Zoom at this point, so we'll go to those in the public here today.
I'm sorry for the interruption, Chairman Drone, but Sheriff Hansel has his hand up.
Oh, great. Yeah, let's go ahead to Sheriff Hansel. Sheriff, you've got the floor. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me on the road, so that I can get a chance to be there, person. Can you hear me okay?
You got a horse voice.
He says we can be the witness.
Um, so that's your copy. I hope that I can get better audio.
Yeah, it's an interesting audio.
Okay.
We can hear you, but we'll just pretend otherwise that you're not horse.
Okay. I'll try my best.
Okay.
It is very, very important that Measure Z public funding continues to help public safety. It's been 10 years since the, yeah, Measure Z came to this board, and the need is still great today. The original need was public safety services, rural tools, sheriffs, sheriff deputy funding, as well as road maintenance and also fire. Those are the three main things that Measure Z was going to really address. And it is something that, that I feel is, is finally, with the tough budget time that it's at, you're always pretty soon right now, I feel like it is very, very important that Measure Z continues our rise in publicity. When our application does fall below our budget decisions, is not last year, we had a bad decision that our Measure Z fund last year, goes, I think our budget fund, us, we don't want to continuously do that because...
Sheriff? Sheriff, we're having a really hard...
We're all there.
Sheriff Hansel? Excuse me for interrupting.
For public safety, for the county allocations right now. And I would really fund all these positions and even put off the boat until, you know, until we know a better snapshot of what, what the county budget outlook is going to look like, period, point four, point five. And, and it has, that all of these take. So, but I have staff there.
Yeah.
In the audience, I can speak, because I know that I'm probably not across very well, so.
All right, and we can come back to you as well. Maybe you could call back in and have a better connection. I think we got a lot of it. We got the gist of it, I assume, but there was some stuff that was hard to hear. But yes, you have very capable staff here. Regina and others are in the audience, ready to make their pitches as well. So thank you for being here. And if we don't get it all covered, we'll invite you back in to, but you might want to try another connection. All right, so with that, we'll go to those here in the audience.
Chairman Drone.
Yes, excuse me?
I'm sorry again.
I got a hand up in Zoom.
Sheriff Hansel, yes, there's a hand up.
Yeah, so we'll take that hand in Zoom, and that is 7454. There you go, welcome.
Thank you. Technology, I raised my hand repeatedly before and I had to redial him. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thanks.
I do, Ken Swawski here. I do, I'm going to cede anything that Holly Kringle, anything Holly Kringle, once she gets my vote, if I have a voter say, but I did want to reiterate something here. This is kind of a test for the county. I strongly support both keeping MIST fully in play and keeping the, the roadside maintenance in for Tom Mattson. The people of Humboldt County, when you went ahead and passed Measure O, lobbied very strongly for that, so that you wouldn't have a sunset. And then instantly, the people that lobbied for you, in my opinion, were thrown under the bus. They were defunded, or they were minimized and marginalized. And everybody's watching to see what you do to rectify this problem. If you have a chance of a snowball and whatever of getting any further tax passed, such as the road tax in November, you're going to have to make sure that you restore as much of the, of the parity that was promised to people under Measure O and Z that's gone away. And I suggest a fatherly advice, or whatever you want to call it, we're watching what it's doing. And unless things change, your chances of having any further taxation coming from the municipalities to the benefit of the county will be minimal. So again, those are my suggestions, keep the MIST and keep the roadside maintenance. Thank you for having me to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And at this point, we do not have any other hands up in Zoom. Supervisor Bushnell, did you have something? Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to go ahead and invite members of the public. Please, come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Regina Fuller. I'm a longtime resident of Humboldt County, and I have been the Finance Director for the Sheriff's Office for the past five years. I am speaking today in favor of prioritizing county departments with Option Three status quo. I would like to remind you that in this current fiscal year, the Sheriff's Office Measure Z funding allocation was not sufficient to cover the operations of the Willow Creek Station, which has historically been funded by Measure Z since 2017, as well as two law enforcement positions for a total of $405,000. In order to avoid closing the station and laying off the two employees, your board granted the Sheriff's Office one-time funding from the General Fund. Additionally, the Sheriff's Office held three supporting Measure Z positions vacant this year and used that $258,000 in funds to cover essential Measure Z deputy overtime. As of this fiscal year, Measure Z is only covering the expenses of 41 of our 46 allocated positions. In order to fully fund our Measure Z positions and the essential deputy overtime, we would need at least an additional $663,000 from Measure Z in this coming fiscal year, or we will need it from the General Fund. Also, I'd like to remind you that in this fiscal year, it was the fourth budget that our Sheriff's Office came forward to let you guys know that we have a significant gap in our General Fund budgets due to workers' comp, insurance increases, the Internal Service Fund charges, general inflation, and the 10% salary budget cut that happened to our General Fund allocation last year that was implemented in order to help pay for the MOU salary increases. I know it's believed that larger departments have the ability to take care of these shortages with vacancies. Our office has been doing that for over four years now, and we have nothing left to give. So in prior years, your board has opted to provide one-time funding to our office to close these budget gaps and avoid layoffs. For this fiscal year, the Sheriff's Office received $4.7 million in one-time General Fund contribution to avoid laying off 34 positions, closing our swap farm and closing the Willow Creek Station. Additionally, to that $4.7 million budget gap that we have not closed, the Sheriff's Office also held 24 additional positions vacant for a total of $3.7 million, so that we could reduce our request on the General Fund. So as we approach the new budget year, we're $8 million short in order for us to fund everything, which is 63 positions. So not only am I in favor of Measure Z status quo, but I would implore you to please consider using any additional Measure Z funding to help us fund these budget gaps. Or, you know, if the General Fund's not able to do it, we're closing essential services. So thank you.
Thank you very much, timely. And next, other commenters. Nobody lining up? If you want to comment, come on over and get ready. Thank you, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. My name is Glenn Zimmer, and I'm a member of Measure Z Committee, and have been on the committee since its inception and served two terms as its chair. So I think it's fair to say I have a reasonable understanding of the committee process and its history. The Measure Z Committee has repeatedly warned the board of our concern over the county domination of the fund. Most recently in 2021, when as chairman, I forwarded a letter to your board outlining our concerns that the county was overrunning the fund and would soon be the only recipient of Measure Z funding. The staff response to our committee and to your board was that we were being overly alarmist, and the CAO produced a 10-year perspective study that suggested that the fund would not face the situation we warned about for at least 10 years. The reality was that the significant salary increases and the resulting increases in benefit costs was accelerating the rate at which the county was dominating the fund, and the county's share cost was outpacing any growth in the fund revenue. The straw that broke the camel's back was the board's stunningly shortsighted decision last year to use a one-time funding windfall to create a range of new county positions that would result in even higher ongoing county expenditures from the fund. These positions were not recommended for funding by the committee, and indeed, there is no universe in which they would ever have been recommended, since they essentially sounded the death knell for any capability to fund any substantial external agency programs has, had been the case for all the prior years. It must be noted that the option outlined in the staff report failed to meet both the committee recommendations and, more importantly, even the target you yourself set for the board. In reality, they can fairly be characterized as simply rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. If you're serious about actually correcting what's going on and bringing the fund back into some sort of reasonable balance, there's three very specific things that you must do. The board must eliminate the excess county positions created by your 2022, '23 supplemental action. The CAO identified 22 county Measure Z positions vacant as of July of this year, with a significant proportion having been vacant for more than a year. Elimination of a significant portion of these vacancies can begin to restore some balance to the fund. The board also needs to establish a hard cap on the county share of the fund expenditure. I have no doubt this will seem to be a radical proposal from your perspective, but nothing less will address the problem the fund is experiencing, and these actions will put the county in the position of honoring the spirit and intent of the measure. If you fail to take these corrective measures, there is one additional action you must undertake, and that is to dissolve the Measure Z Committee, because at that point, it will have no real-world function. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And any other commenters who would like to share their thoughts with us? I see one person moving towards the podium.
Good afternoon. Chairman and, and board members, thanks for giving me a moment. Lon Winburn, county fire chief's Measure Z Committee. I don't need to remind you, but I will anyway, that 10 years ago, as Glenn mentioned, you know, when this thing started, we were side by side with law enforcement, speaking of county fire, we were side by side with law enforcement and others promoting this thing to the public. And I think the public really saw, you know, really saw the need for fire, for rural fire service. Fast forward five years, Measure O, to continue Measure Z funding. Again, we're right in there in the, we're right in the trenches, working hard on this thing, you know, to, to get this thing funded and continue on. So I think it's, and, and I think that the, the county fire service can really show the accountability that we've had over those years of funding. You know, we put a five-year game plan together initially to put fire stations out, out there, to put fire engines out there, as opposed to the ones that maybe wouldn't start, and if they did, we weren't sure they would make it to the call. We've replaced those engines. We put fire stations out there. We put training facilities out there. We now, you know, have our firefighters in compliant, you know, equipment. We've got rescue equipment, jaws of life, if you will, that can serve every area of the county, every road, every motorist out there now. And this has all been due to this Measure Z funding. And I think that the voters, you know, saw the need, and I think they supported the need. And, and I just hope that you will keep that in mind as you move forward with these decisions. You know, I know we're not, we're not a county entity, I get it. You're not responsible for fire. I get that, too. But we've always had a great partnership, and I'd really, really like to see that continue. And, and I think it's doable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comments and come back to the board. And who would like to jump in? Anybody? Ad hoc, any more information, or Supervisor Bushnell?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question with Measure Z. So currently, there are eight positions, and four of them are allocated and four are not. Is that correct?
There are four public works positions for the brush cutting crew, and there are four missed positions through DHHS.
What did I say, Measure Z?
You asked.
I'm sorry, I meant missed. Yeah, I meant the MIST program. So are there, because there is currently some vacancies within the MIST program, or not?
Not sure exactly where the, where the staffing is right now on that.
It's half, yeah. I think there's eight, I think there's, half is, only half of them are working and half of them are vacant. Do you know, Alicia?
Yeah, I was just checking the vacancy rates. The DHHS Measure Z Budget Unit has six vacancies, and four of those, I believe, are the missed positions, which are currently being funded by the grant funds. However, come January 1, those positions will move over to the Measure Z Budget Unit and then be funded by Measure Z. And as Director Beck said, what, what her request of your board would be is to continue funding those through Measure Z through the end of the fiscal year, June 30, at which point in time she believes she has some confidence level that she can fund that potentially through CalAim.
Okay. And when, so when the ad hoc was having discussions with the sheriff and with Connie about the MIST program, and Mike cut in if I get wrong here. Currently, the MIST program is a pretty new program that is not working unassisted with the deputies, and at this time, won't be able to for quite some time. And so it's a service that they're trying to, I believe, ramp up to get in the future, and Sean, you were there, too, to be able to work independent and to free up deputies with the more mental health or crisis-type work. But they would need for the MIST program to continue forward to be able to try to get that more solid. Is that your, is that what you heard?
Yeah, from, from what I remember from the conversation is that staff is just not at the point yet where they can determine from the call that comes in whether missed staff could go and respond independently without law enforcement there. Right now, it's just, they need to form a team when they go out, assess the situation, and then determine if law enforcement's still needed when both agencies arrive on the scene.
Okay. And then the vacancy for the road brush thing is how many, how many are vacant there?
None, I believe.
So we fully funded that. And so, Tom, could you come back up? So currently with that brush program, I know that you guys worked this last year, and I know in my district, there isn't that brush, those people that are funded by Measure Z are working in the southern Humboldt area, and that is the only brush work that's happening down there? Is that true?
No, the crew also does some brush work. But again, this, this crew is focused, and they are leveraging outside funding. The crew has a mower. They don't do as much as the mo crew can do, definitely.
Okay. And so that mo crew is just dedicated to roadside cutting throughout Humboldt County? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how many mowers?
There's two on that crew, and then there's one in each of the other crews, for a total of eight countywide.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have right now until the board.
Supervisor Bone, and then Wilson?
And I, I appreciate the talk earlier about the brush cutting crew and everything else, but unattended fires, the moving of illegal burning debris, lightning, human reaction, and then it gets down to cigarettes. Very, and very few fires have been caused locally by, by chains. I mean, locally, because we're a little bit, a little more damper until we get into the eastern part and those areas. So there's only a certain amount that we've really got to get to. And, and, and I, and I, and I appreciate Tom and the job they do on this. I appreciate Lon. Yeah, you guys did stand with police. I remember I, I gave $2,500 to the first campaign and was on that committee. I can remember meeting in Arcade on this and the importance of this for, for public, for public safety. So, and what we've done with fire has been great. The issue is fire, you guys are 37 of the 40, or 36 of the 39, or whatever the number is, are volunteers. And we have probably one of the, one of the best volunteers. And the, and the equipment, the air packs and everything else, bringing you guys up to levels that you can respond, respond safely to fires. You know, I don't, I, I'd love to keep everything status quo and, and keep funding. We have, we have funded the big, you know, the firehouses. We won't have big, big expenses like that, I think, because everybody's, you know, getting to the point where most of those are up now, I, I believe, and, and engineered, ended up being a lot more to them than getting the building in a box. So, I mean, even Redcrest looks like it's almost there. So as we move forward, sheriffs, I mean, you know, if we look at the amount of calls, you guys get a huge amount of calls, sheriffs get a huge amount of calls, we're all covering. We have one department covering two point, you know, 2.6 million acres, and you guys get 40. So I mean, the differentiation of having everybody prepared for the public safety that we need to provide, and then we come into the other agencies. I mean, I can remember sitting here six years ago, no, seven years ago, eight years ago, funding the ambulance in, in Willow Creek. And we swore it would be one-time money, maybe two-time money, and then we would put it out there that, again, a lot of the accidents happen, our people coming from Rico, going to Willow Creek Recreate to spend money and taxes, and we, and we were providing the money to maybe go to a, a tax and maybe utilizing, you know, the hoop on everything else. And that started at $260,000, and we're going to be popping it half a million dollars this year. And I, and I do believe in our constitution, it's probably the only thing we have to provide is ambulance service, I believe. We don't have to provide sheriff, or I believe is how it goes, I heard. So, even though we're going to. So I mean, we need, we need to look at this 100%. I've been being told between offshore wind and the, the fish plant that we're going to have so many sales tax dollars and everything else. Maybe these projections aren't pie in the sky, maybe they're going to happen. I mean, so some of these things, a lot of these positions, like the 22 positions that are shorthanded, I mean, today we did two, I think we talked to three department heads today, two department heads, and everybody says they're wildly understaffed. We're still not operating, probably not to the degree that our, our constituents, you know, our peeps and constituents deserve, but I think we're, we're getting there. So I, the basics of the job that the volunteer fire service does deserves our support and our funding, because they're the biggest bargain we got. The funding for the deputies has to be there, because crime is not, crime is not dropping in any, I, I don't see Stacy taking Fridays off or anything else. I don't see, I don't see our public defender or anybody else getting less of a bucket load. load up there every day. So we, we have to make sure we're taking care of our own as we reach out and take care of others. And I just, that's my biggest way I've got right now. And I, and, and this was, I remember, it was, it was public safety, we're based on public safety. And, and it's like when we say we're going to have a roads initiative, we're talking about spending money for roads initiative, and then we start throwing transit trails and everything else, and no, I get calls on roads. And I don't get very many calls on brush. And I think I may have even more county road than you have, because you get a lot of state highway on 96 and 299 and everything. So I, I don't know, I kind of lean into status quo, funding what we have and, and hoping for the best and taking a gamble, but a gamble every day when we get up, so.
Okay. And Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm worried about the status quo, and that the sheriff's department is, you know, they'll come for the general fund, and we know that, sheriff said, and I need sheriffs in my district as much as everybody else. But the status quo does not leave any money for fire. And I, I, I know we have the chart where we can pull up, and no, it leaves $460,000. No. And I, I, you know, their ask has all, has been $2 million, they got 600 something, a lot of that go into dispatch. And I would really like to look at some dedicated funding for fire. And I know that the, the roads, the brush is really important as well, that, you know, I do get calls about brush in my district, and I have a ton of roads as well. And so if we could look at maybe some dedicated monies for fire, the status quo doesn't give us anything for fire. Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair. So it, it sounds like the question over the MIST positions may be progressing. That would lead us to option two, which moves more than $400,000 back into Measure Z. And, excuse me, as you'll see on the chart, that savings goes towards fire. And so that would provide fire with about a million dollars per year guaranteed allocation. I'll also remind you that this year, because those, the board allocated all those positions in 22, 23, it took so long for us to fill those positions, and the MIST positions were funded from a different source for a while. There's that $3 million in fund balance available to smooth out the next couple of years and provide some guaranteed funding for some other agencies.
So when you say dedicated to fire, is that still an application process?
Yep.
And that's not dedicated?
So by adopting this plan, that would provide those allocations for the next three years.
So that would be a set percentage to fire that would give them a million dollars?
That's correct.
And then what would be the shortfall to the sheriff's department?
By the end of fiscal year '26, '27, the shortfall would be 771,000.
And so next year, it would, what would next year be for the sheriff's?
93,000.
A shortfall?
Correct.
I will add that that's based on our calculations, with the stipulation that the sheriff's department had somewhat different, Regina presented different calculations than what we see here. So I think ours is a little bit lower than hers.
Okay. Thank you.
And one last question. So if the dedicated money for fire is a million dollars, and then there, say there's $3 million left over, like currently there is, and so the application process would still allow for them to apply?
For additional funding, that's correct.
Right. And the sheriff could then additionally apply as well, or is just his, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there's, there's nothing preventing departments from applying for funding, but as I said, the Measure Z committee adopted a stance last year that they would not recommend to your board funding additional county positions.
So remind me again, at the end of '26, the shortfall for the sheriffs is how much? 96,000?
At the end of?
'26?
'26, '27. Their shortfall, based on our projections, is 770,000.
Oh, 770,000. Okay. Yeah. And then can I ask Regina a question? So you heard the projections are a little bit different than what you said?
Yeah, we may be looking at different, I, I didn't look at any numbers that they put together for this. I was looking at our current budget. I am curious, too. We had this debate, we had this debate the last budget season. You know, for example, I believe they're only looking at the positions, but Willow Creek Station operations was approved several years ago. Is that being included in the ongoing costs? Body worn cameras was approved. When we submitted that application, there was some ongoing costs for software. So I would need to sit down with the CIO's office and see what are they including in our calculations. Vehicle, patrol vehicles were approved years ago. Well, patrol vehicles cost money every year, so those kind of things.
So again, Sean just shook his head, no, those aren't considered in this. So that's probably where you?
Yeah, and those were approved by the, by the board as ongoing, in our application, it was specified as ongoing funding, but that, that's why I think we ended up in a problem this year, is that wasn't being included. And this was the first year I had a problem with balancing that budget and had to go to the general fund and request money for things that had previously been approved and paid for by Measure Z.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Supervisor Bone, and then Natalie, go ahead. Okay. Mike? Go ahead, Supervisor Wilson.
Let's see, a couple of things. I, I do, I do hear about the need for cutting brush, but I also hear about lines on the road and potholes, probably just as much. So it's kind of, it's a little, it's all in the mix, as I would say. But I, I do really appreciate that Tom has leveraged other funding to, to manage this in the way that it is. And so I, I lean towards, in a lot of these things, where we're leveraging other funds, especially external funds, to come into the county to help us with these various things. It's, and I'm going to just put out there, it's, it's not the highest thing on my hierarchy of public safety items, but it is in there. But one of the things that is very high on my list is the, is our, our fire programs. And I think Supervisor Bone really said it pretty clearly, like it's a bargain. And it's a bargain because it doesn't just leverage external funds, but it leverages community members specifically and, and through the volunteers and other things like that, and even through donations within their own communities. It just, that resource is, when we invest in those, in that infrastructure, in that social infrastructure and physical infrastructure of these, of our fire departments, it, it creates dividends, and it's very important. So I think it's something I'm, I'm leaning towards what Supervisor Bushnell was saying with relationship to some sort of, some sort of guarantee with relationship to those departments, especially if we're talking about grants that, that they're applying for that have matching funds that are required. The MIST program, I, I think we're undervaluing that in this moment. Part of the reason is because it's new. Well, I mean, what by new, I mean new in the last few years. You know, in terms of like, we, nationwide, it's still not fully established. There's very few programs that are where the MIST, what we would call MIST people, where folks from mental health would go out on their own, right? It's typically, there is either one's calling law enforcement, or law enforcement's calling the other, and they're, and they're going together, because the situations are, it's fairly new from the perspective of, of tying it to specifically to law enforcement, or even sort of the, the way things are working together. And even just today, I was talking to one of the deputies here today, and he was saying how grateful he was that, that MIST was available to address an issue with a person in the community who was having a really hard time, was living in a tent, and they were able to, the MIST staff person was able to connect that person to, to services that, that he badly needed. And of course, that then relieved the law enforcement agency of, of that burden in the community that they would have to deal with in that, in that, in that time. And, and so, at least, you know, burden on their, on their resources. What I'm, what I'm getting at is that I, I kind of feel like, I, I hear a lot from my community members that the services like MIST are really, really important to them because they feel, they feel and see that a lot of the, of the issues that are being dealt with, with law enforcement, who are trained very well in all of what they do, but the added, you know, challenge around folks needing these, these other kinds of services, specifically mental health services, is not necessarily what law enforcement is, is trained to do. And so having that resource to them has been very, very helpful. I heard the, the director say that, hey, if you're considering removing these positions, please don't remove them for another six months, because they're looking at some funding to come in with relationship to that. So minimally, I'm, I'm not willing, or, you know, personally, I don't really want to like remove these positions or defund those positions before any such time as we know that those other resources are available and come, and, and for, for us. And I fully want the, actually, the expansion of this type of service, I do believe that it, it will benefit the communities in general. If we go with, I guess it sounds like option two, it still leaves us with, I, I see the, it still leaves, you know, every one of the departments will have a deficit in two years, two or three years. They'll all, will, will be all dealing with deficits. Status quo, I think, does not, right? But the problem is, is that the deficit then comes from the general fund. So I want to just, the, the last question on the list would be, for me, is where is the cutoff where we feel like we allocate, we've pre-allocated so much of these funds that we really, you know, Mr. Zeimer is basically saying, why even have a committee? If you've pre-allocated everything, what is, what's the point of having citizens deliberate about what's left over if there's nothing left over? Where do we see that happening? We see that happening in the status quo option, right? Do I have that correct, or can you?
Couple of things. So the Citizens Advisory Committee has been incredibly indispensable over the last 10 years, not just in terms of recommending which projects to fund, but also providing a public forum to express concerns about Measure Z, as they've done this year. This is a significant change in the way that we are considering allocating Measure Z funding. This discussion would not have occurred without the Measure Z committee bringing this to your, bringing this concern to your board. If your, I'm sorry, if your board were to continue with option two, remember, this is only a three-year funding plan. This only provides allocations, set allocations for a portion of the revenue. We still need a body to review what these agencies are doing with this funding. They still need to provide those quarterly reports. They still need to answer to the committee when the committee calls upon them. In addition, there is always, there is typically $1 to $2 million per year in unspent funding from the prior year that would be available for recommendation as well. As that, the, this revenue projection of $12.5 million, we feel pretty confident is, is relatively low. So there should be additional funding, $5, $700,000 in ongoing funding, plus an additional $1.2 million, $1 to $2 million per year in unspent funding. So there will still be, I believe, substantial funding available to recommend for funding, as well as reviewing what the, what the agencies are doing with this funding, and providing all additional policy considerations to bring to your board. There's a lot of work that the Measure Z committee is doing, and as I said, they have been indispensable over the last decade.
And one more point with relationship to the leveraging of this, this network of community volunteers and workforce related to our, our fire departments and, and agencies is that, I mean, I hear from my community very, very often that those, for them, are often their first responders for so many things, because you're talking about people in the community. And, and it's true, the sheriff's department is stretched thin by budget and personnel, it just is. I mean, we're not the only place that's like that. I mean, that's a constant discussion, especially in rural spaces all over the United States. Lots of space to cover, you know, budget issues and shortfalls all over the place. And so it, there is just so much that the community relies on, you know, with relationship to those, that volunteer network. And I want to make sure that we do what we can to keep that, that network alive and thriving. I think it's beneficial to, it's also beneficial to the services, to the sheriff's department themselves. I mean, they need those people there to be, to, to supplement and help their, you know, law enforcement and public safety issues. So I'm not, I mean, I'm hopeful we can get somewhere today. I don't want to punt necessarily, because I feel like we should be giving some direction with relationship to this. But I, I do actually lean into the space where, where we will have some departmental deficits in two years. And even though that might be a direction, that gives some headway for, or some, you know, some line of sight for those departments to start adjusting and figuring out, or maybe even finding revenues or alternative revenues to like make these things whole. Reminder that before we did Measure Z, we didn't have any of this revenue. And we've created a whole, you know, and we were desperate as a, as a community for those resources. And we're, even though we're better now in terms of having those resources, for sure, I'm glad that we've, we, we did that. I will support doing more of that. I think it's been a very transparent process. We, I, I just want to point out, we're, I mean, we have to be cognizant that we, we almost didn't have it, you know? And so I'm having, just, it was really through the hard work of law enforcement and our, and our fire folks and other public safety people and, and, and public works folks that got us where we are today, and we want to be thankful for that.
Okay. Supervisor Royal?
Thank you. Well, I'm sure you can all appreciate that no one wants to be in this seat when the money runs out, right? Nobody wants to be on the dais when that happens, but it's, it's part of our jobs. And, you know, we are talking about, I think, you know, a couple of folks have, have brought up that essentially, you know, we're talking about Measure O, Measure Z funds, and, you know, many of these county positions that are fixed positions, you know, will turn to the general fund when, when and if Measure O runs out. I will say, I campaigned for this two times. I had the good fortune of running in 2014 and running in 2018, and supporting Measure Z and then Measure O, and talking to people about it at their doors. So like many of you who have gone door to door and campaigned for this, I knocked on a heck of a lot of doors, and I talked to a lot of people who frankly had questions or might not have supported it. And I would say a lot of the, you know, voters that support Natalie Royal are not always the voters for whom public safety is their first and foremost concern. So I talked to a lot of people in voting for it, actually. And, you know, a big thing that I recall from both of those campaigns was that so many people cared about the committee process. So many people cared about that process. And it was the like thing that they're like, "I don't know," like, you know, "It seems like it's just gonna, you know, fund some things that are not my top priority." And, and sales taxes are regressive. They impact people who don't have a lot of income more. And so, you know, I, I think a lot of folks, and when you look at the, you know, Measure Z and then Measure O passed by such a large margin, and we break down by precincts who voted for it, you know, numerically, and, you know, in, you know, from an intellectual perspective, it just makes sense. You're, you're talking about a lot of people in cities. You're, you're talking about a lot of people in cities and a, a lot of people in my district who, you know, I would say are like consciously knew that they were voting to support rural fire. Consciously knew they were voting to support services that they might not directly experience very often themselves, but that those things were important. And rural fire came up a lot, you know, that idea of the volunteer fire departments being able to stretch the dollars really far and not having a lot of other revenue streams. So those are some things that, that I recall and that I've heard about, you know, and continue to hear about from constituents, but that I talked to people about at their doors. You know, many, many people asked me what I thought of this and, you know, ended up in conversation with me about it. And I campaigned like, I go, they knocked on a lot of doors. So the, the broad statements in the ballot are, you know, I think it's very difficult to say, this is the one thing or the most important thing that Measure C was supposed to do or Measure O was supposed to do. Even our own FAQ about it says that it'll not only maintain 911 emergency response times and provide services for victims of child abuse and provide rural ambulance and fire protection. It'll also provide additional mental health services for children, ensure 24/7 sheriff's deputies, repair roads and fund volunteer fire departments. So those are the things that we continue to tell the community Measure Z is going to be able to accomplish. And we're, we're just at the point where we're running out of money. Behavioral health, I will say, for the, many of the folks who, who cared about this and voted for it also was a top priority. And I would say while other supervisors might hear different things in their districts, behavioral health is the top priority for people that I hear about and the number one thing that people reach out to me, to talk to me about. I apologize, I was shaking my head earlier because I was just, wanted to reflect that Measure Z wasn't new. I remember when I first got in the Eureka City Council in 2014, there was a lot of the planning and ramping up to implementing it. It started right at the beginning of 2015 and had a banner year in 2015, reaching more than 500 unduplicated people who were experiencing severe mental illness and, you know, potentially homeless or at risk of being homeless and had frequent encounters with law enforcement. So even though Measure, or excuse me, MIST hasn't reached the point where, I think I misspoke earlier. I was talking about MIST anyway. Even though MIST has not reached the point where the providers are individually dispatched without a law enforcement officer, I do hear a lot about the benefits of that. And they had a little bit of a staffing shortage and a break during COVID. And I'm sure there were other situations that I'm not elaborating on right now. But, you know, I think it's an incredibly important program, so I will, I will definitely go to the mat for MIST. The revenue streams are really promising and I applaud the personnel with DHHS who've been able to find those other ways to seek reimbursement for those services and grant funding. And I'm, I'm hopeful that that will continue. But I do think it's really critical that we ensure that that program doesn't go away at any point again. I think when it comes to that, that committee, that is a sense of public accountability that's really critical to people. And from the, the folks in my community and the folks that I hear from, that is, that is a, a really critical element to retain. And I know that, you know, we're kind of at the point where there's just not enough money left in the pot, but I would advocate for some amount to still be able to allocate. It's a rare opportunity to make money go further through partnerships, and it also engages people in a different way. And that was a key part of the promise of Measure Z and Measure O, was that that would, that would be in place. So lastly, I want to note that, you know, the city of Eureka, for example, which is a large part of my district, the population goes from, you know, about 27,000 people who are residents to over 100,000 during the day, people shopping, coming through, working. So, you know, a lot of the experiences around need are concentrated in, in our communities like Eureka, like, you know, my district. And I just want to acknowledge that, you know, the city's not getting money anymore from Measure Z. And, you know, the, but the MIST program is something that does help to augment other services in our community and does address behavioral health needs within my district and within all of our districts. But, you know, there's a little overlap there that's always existed and has been really beneficial to address some of the most front and center public safety and public concern issues in the community. So I would go to bat for volunteer fire having a guaranteed revenue stream, especially something fixed so that they can then seek funding from other sources to augment that. And for MIST and to meet that behavioral health need. And the rest of it, you know, I think we're going to see those asks just turned to the general fund. So I'm, I'm under no delusions that we're going to solve our budget problem by making decisions around Measure O. But I do think having some allocation that the committee can still enact is really important for public trust.
Okay, Supervisor Bone.
As silly as that may seem, this probably is just, since I've done radio ads and everything else, shopping local does make a difference, the sales tax dollars and everything else. And to what Supervisor, Supervisor, Supervisor Royal said, that those extra 75,000 people that come into Eureka, because I've got a little piece of Eureka too, they spend that extra percent and a half sales tax here very happily and let the city of Eureka. So you, you get a little chunk of our, you know, money out there, so we're, we're glad to provide a little bit.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I, you know, I'm going to advocate for dedicated monies to fire, and I'm also going to advocate for the Sheriff's Department. In 2008, the substation in Garperville closed. And out of that, for a few years, came the thoughts of Measure Z with fire and with the roads, public safety. And I, I also know that everyone in my district comes to Eureka to shop. Every single person, I don't think there's not one at some point, come to shop in Eureka, and that's why it grows to 100,000. Natalie, do you know if, is there a MIST program currently within Eureka, the city of Eureka?
Yeah, it's called the Care Team, and it was developed, initially it was funded by Measure Z and now it's not. So that was, I think it's frankly stemmed from a time when there wasn't as much MIST activity and that need just continued to grow. So yeah, and, and I will say the county collaborates with the city of Eureka to help make that program happen through, through different partnership opportunities. But yes, that's no longer funded by Measure O and it's, it's ongoing.
And, and one more question, and I'm sorry, I don't know, but they, they just pass a public safety tax in Eureka? Or some kind of a tax that is able to help fund MIST?
Are you thinking Measure J?
I'm not sure, that's why I'm asking.
There's a public infrastructure piece happening, so that's why you see so much roadwork going on right now.
Okay.
But I can't remember the measure letter, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought, I thought there was a public safety one that also, you know, those other people come out of the community and also support. So I, I, I know that, you know, the Sheriff's Department will come to the general fund. I'm not willing to, to have not sheriff in my, in my district. It's really important. I don't, I think Steve knows also that Willow Creek will, you know, suffer. But also fire in, I have 17 departments in my district. And in the very rural areas, they're the first there. They wait for sheriffs to back them up if it's a bad, you know, scenario. They need the money too. And they need the money, those communities, that depend on those volunteer fire departments. And I'm just going to, I know, but I really want the dedicated money. I don't know if a million, it's never been a million dollars for their ask. It's always been two, we've always funded two in the past. Two and a half, so I don't know, a million dollars is not, you know, with them having to pay dispatch. But, you know, roads is very important to me as well, but sheriffs, fire, roads.
So go ahead.
I just, I misspoke. It's Measure H, and it does include all of those things. It's, it's similar to Measure O in that it's like everything under one umbrella. And a lot of that is being spent on roads, but I, I don't know, since I'm no longer with the city, exactly how, how all that's.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I put you on the spot. I just didn't, I was trying to get it in my head, because we did fund MIST for Eureka and we funded MIST for Humboldt County. And so I wanted to try to, in my head, get that figured out.
Well, I'll offer, yeah, go ahead, Sean.
I want to, I want to try to direct our, our efforts towards one of these options. And it appears that some version of option two may be what your board is considering. I'll just reiterate also that there is that $3 million in fund balance that is available. Typically, that fund balance comes back to be reallocated at mid-year, all in one lump. In order to get closer to your goal, your board can make a policy decision to spread that fund balance over several years. You can choose to increase the sheriff's allocation, for example. You can choose to increase the fire allocation over this planned period, and that would help get your board towards that 80% goal.
Thank you, appreciate that. Supervisor Bushnell.
One last thing. When we were having Measure D, Z discussions several months ago, and there were amounts that everybody got cut, and there was shortfall on all of those requests, did our board, we talked about if there were monies coming back, that we would try to allocate fully those things that we ended up cutting. So I want this board in that discussion to remember that also, that we did talk about if there was more money, we would fund up fire who only got $694,000. And Supervisor Madron said something about the ambulance, you know, and Star Ambulance was cut, the Sheriff's Department was cut. So I know it's really important to hold monies over in different areas. I'm not sure whether Measure Z, whether that's the right thing to do with that money.
So go ahead, Sean, respond.
This, the fund balance I'm talking about is from '22, '23 would typically be used in '23, '24. There will be additional savings in the current year in '23, '24 to be allocated for '24, '25.
Supervisor Bone.
So Ken, I must have missed, I thought status quo kept the million for the fire, so I apologize for that. I know. But with that being said, I've sat up here for probably four or five years and said, okay, if we have any money left over in February, we'll give it to roads, and usually roads never gets it. So, so Tom must be the most easygoing guy in the world or just has given up. I, I know for a fact that I've had more accidents at Oak and F than I've had fires started by dragging chains in Humboldt County. And we pulled back the, the stoplight that we had approved at Oak and F. So that was another cut that was made in, in county. So as, as we make this cuts, and I still think we need a, especially with the changes that are being made on Broadway, F Street has turned into an alternative freeway because nobody wants to drive Broadway with everything that's going on. But I think when we look at the 3 million, if we want to sit here and say, okay, we're going to give them this much and everything else. But if, if we sit here and, and stay with, with number two and dedicate a million, and like I said to earlier and things like that, a lot of the big asks have been handled for the fire. And I mean, by the fire, the fire buildings, the trucks, which will get pretty good service for a lot of volunteers. Some of those trucks are 20 years old, and I don't expect to get 20 out of these. But we're, we're in good shape because we do have a lot of good-looking equipment out there. And, and the safety, life expectancy, I know on a lot of the gear is seven, nine years long, is that? Yeah, something like that. I know air packs are seven, maybe, maybe more by, with usage and everything. So we, we've got some time on those and stuff like that. So to keep those, the fire funded, is a million enough? No, is, is 7 million enough for the sheriffs? No. I have found out one thing after 12 years up here, there's never enough. There will never, I've never had somebody saying, I got enough, we're in good shape. Here, let me give you a little bit back. It just doesn't happen. But things are, things have changed a little bit. Things change, this isn't, this isn't a cycle where we're on a downhill slide. We're not on a slide, we're in, we're in, we're in a tailspin and we're going to pull out and come up. I mean, but it's, it's, it's a pattern. So as we, as we tighten our belts and move forward, but we do, as Supervisor Royal, she read everything off, that was all pretty much public safety stuff when we were, when we were advertising that. And, and as Supervisor Madron said earlier, the condition of some of these roads are a public safety issue. So, I mean, I, somebody said something, if everybody's mad, we did our job. And I don't want, nobody's, everybody's going to be mad, nobody's going to be mad at us, they're going to be mad with us, I hope. Because we're not holding money back for us or anything else like that. We're trying to just, at the end of the day, we're not denying you. We're trying to provide for the people of Humboldt County across the board, so. Like you said, it's, I don't mind being up here when we don't have money, it's just not as much fun, so.
Yeah, there's no money tree, right? I mean, that's what we're dealing with, that there's a limited amount of money to handle all these important aspects. I'm actually leaning towards option one. I think we've got some really tough decisions to make, and I'd rather start making them now. I do want to make sure that we are actually doing, making decisions that continue to provide value or get value from the committee, as was mentioned by Mr. Zimer. And I like the idea of having, having dedicated funding for fire, I very much like that. But, you know, as far as our overall funds, I think we're all very hopeful that as we close out all these audits on these past several years, we'll know exactly where we're at with our finances. We think that things are looking a little bit better on some of those accounts. Without getting into the details yet, we'll get that in January with our first quarter report, I believe it is, that will come to us. But we've got tough choices to make. And whether, you know, if we don't make the really tough choices now, then we're going to have a lot more tough choices to make at the budget session come April through May, April through June. So I'd rather we start making them now, and it basically means we're not going to be able to fund all the things we, we want to fund. And I absolutely believe the public thought that roads was going to be a big part of public safety and Measure Z funding, and it just hasn't worked out that way. We're working on that through some other angles and things, but, you know, my preference would be option one and make the tough choices right now and start dealing with it, because otherwise it's just going to get even tougher. I mean, that's what we did last year in the budget session. We funded everything, added a whole bunch of positions, even when we had recommendations to not do so. And frankly, it's put us in a much tougher place. What we didn't predict was that the economy was going to turn down and sales tax were going to, you know, be reduced. So when you say it's a conservative number, 12 and a half million, that's because, that's kind of what we're getting during this turn down with sales tax, right? It's a, that's kind of a ballpark number, maybe even a little lower to be conservative. But I'm all for making the tough choices right now, and I know that's not going to please everybody, but I do want to make sure fire gets some allocation. I'd love to see an allocation for roads above and beyond the road crew for brushing, but that's just me. So we've had a lively discussion for an hour and 45 minutes. And I think we ought to try and see if we can wrap our head around a motion and move this forward. Sean, please.
To be clear, option one would continue funding the four DHHS MIST positions.
I would convert that to ending June 30th, as Connie had suggested.
So that, that would be, option, option two does that.
Well, option two does some other things as well.
It deallocates the four MIST positions beginning in '24, '25. Both of these options provide set allocations for outside agencies, for KMAO, for Fortuna, for the DTF position, for fire and for Star Ambulance.
So you feel that option two fits more closely with what you're hearing?
With the discussion that we've been having, correct.
That's good feedback, and I've heard a lot of support for two. So at any rate, Supervisor Bushnell and then Wilson.
So I, I'm, the allocation for fire for, for option one, but the option one cuts the Sheriff's Department much greater. Is that correct or no?
No, option one and two provide $6.75 million for the sheriff for the next three years.
The only difference between option one and option two is the deallocation of the MIST, and that funds from the MIST then goes to fire in option two.
In option, and so what, in your chart, if you pull up, what percentage of allocation is to fire on option two? So I know you have, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
It would be 8% in '24, '25, and then it would slowly get lower as county departments, the small departments that were fully funding increased some. And so it would end up at around 7.4% in 26.
For fire?
Yeah, in '26, '27.
And so if you were to increase the percentage And so if you were to increase the percentage to fire, then you would have to take from somewhere else?
Correct. Or you could utilize some of the remaining three million that we have discussed, the three million fund balance.
Yeah.
Right.
To smooth out.
Well, go ahead, Supervisor Wilson, and then Supervisor Bone.
This also assumes, I mean, that funding for KMAO and Fortuna will remain, and we don't know necessarily what those recommendations will be, we don't know if there will be in the future, is what I'm saying. We don't know if they'll find external funding to supplement, because we've been asking for the, everybody to look for that. So I want to, the, I just, this is, um, this is like, assuming a status quo with relationship to that, and I don't know if we've ever assumed a status quo every year, annually, for any of these programs. So I just want to, like, put that out there. These are, I don't want these other agencies to be just like, hey, it's automatic, we're just going to get it next year through this process, because we don't know. And I, I don't want this to be that doc, the document that says that necessarily, or makes that assumption personally. I mean, I, what, what I'm more concerned about is our internal spending, and with the relationship to the outside agencies and fire and those other kind of bigger blocks, the sort of individuals, I'm a little bit, um, the, and I guess, I guess that what I, some of the outside agencies would fit into that realm as well, right? Because that, that's where, that's where the, um, the committee has made, makes annual recommendations. Is that right?
Yes, however, this, this plan, this was a really tough budget year, and through your board's deliberation process and allocation process, it appeared that these four agencies rose to the top, and so that's why this, these recommendations have provided set allocations for the next three years for those four agencies.
I see what you're saying. You're looking for some stability in the direction that we're going in to do some budget planning. But all I'm saying is that, that might be what our, our goal is here today, but I'm just putting it out there, it's like, every year, they still get reviewed. And so, what we're saying now is that they're not to be reviewed, and that we're just going to put those aside, and they're also in another, I see. Yeah, that's, um, I, I see what the, the, the purpose of that is, it doesn't make me comfortable necessarily, so, that's just.
Supervisor Bone?
I, I like what Supervisor Wilson said, if we didn't have Measure Z, we wouldn't be here talking about it, we just wouldn't have a lot of things that we have now. With that, it allows, if we can give three years stable funding, even though it's, it's short and everything else, it allows funding to plan for funding with the option, we can still have that three million sitting there. And if things improve, and, I mean, stock market's improving, so if things keep improving, and some of these people that are looking at coming here, and businesses are coming here, all of this comes to fruition, at the end of three years, we may be sitting better. I'm, that's what I'm planning on. Um, so, I, and I, and I don't think that's that far-fetched. So I think as we move forward, it allows, even though, I'd rather know that I'm going to have a little bit of something, rather than it's, it's jumping around every year, and maybe a little bit more than, geez, I wonder what I'm going to get this year, and, you know, throw the dart at the dartboard. So, I think, and the three million sits there, so that we do have a safety valve if an emergency arises. I mean, I don't want to see Willow Creek closed, I don't want to see substations closing, I don't want to, you know, um, Sheriff Department, I've, you know, talked with, it's absolutely amazing how many other departments and counties that are in a little bit better shape are offering $50,000 signing bonuses. And, and it looks pretty, you know, exciting for these people, and I don't, it's not just about, you know, we've got a, you know, we, we've done what we can for them, but we've got to be able to provide, and we don't need them being in a more stressful position, because they don't know if their backup's going to be there in 10 minutes or 25 minutes. And that's a big deal, you know, on a, on a domestic violence and everything else, that we've got to make sure that we've got those out there, and by having those substations, we allow that. So, this is a bad problem we're having with Measure Z, we just don't have as much as we had six years ago, seven years ago, but we still have some, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'd be supportive of option two. I actually, and I like that we're considering preserving the three million, but frankly, I'd like to allocate a million of that to Rhodes. I mean, I do think we have an emergency happening with our roads, frankly speaking, every road in, every county road in the county, just about. Um, I don't want to spend down all our reserves, but I would be willing to allocate a million and give that as a dedication, just like we're doing for fire and things like that. One of the other things in the budget process is Measure S. In our budget next year, we are, I believe, proposing to not even include any potential revenue, we're just not going to rely upon it. But we're currently owed, I believe it's 12 million or 14 million dollars in back taxes, and this board has taken some good moves recently to try and bring that to an end. You know, either you're going to pay up those taxes and back fees, or we're going to suspend the licenses for those operations. Um, and so they have to come forward by the end of March with a payment plan, and they have to pay all their back taxes by the end of December of, of next year. So, whatever happens there, even if we only get 25% of that, you know, that's four million or so, uh, that we're not going to budget for, right? So there's that potential silver lining. My hope is it could be more than that, but at the very least, we're going to separate out those farmers that are actually in the business, want to move forward, and are willing to pay, uh, what they owe. So, it's just a little caveat that's sitting out there, that along with some other changes that might happen over the next few years with the economy, I hope this is the low point, but, you know, you never, never really know with the way things are going. But at any rate, somebody want to take a crack at a motion and move us forward?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, that we enact, uh, option two with it ending, with the MIST ending in 24, '25. And with that, on a caveat, I don't think the respect we have for the jobs all of you do out there is in any way minimal by the amount of money we give you. We'd give you more if we had it, and I think that's, I think that's, um, I, that's central for me, and I know, I'm sure it's central for everybody else.
So does that include the dedication of funding for fire, or do we need to separate that? Nope, it's already in there. Okay. Second for that motion?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Yeah, please.
So, in option two, the dedication for KMAO is, is that their full request, and for the Star, I'm just looking at it, um, here.
Yeah, when you said Fortuna, you mean Star Ambulance? Or you meant the other Fortuna stuff?
Fortuna, which was the...
Task force and other things, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, understood. So please finish, Supervisor Bushnell?
So, I'm looking at it, but is it, it's their full, um, so they asked for three, oh, so they asked for 348?
No.
No.
Sorry, it's not, it's not exactly clear on here. Their full request was over 400,000, I think 440 or 460,000 dollars. Your board allocated this year $320,000 to KMAO. This would provide them $325,000 each year for the next three years. It would provide Fortuna $200,000 flat for the next three years, uh, would provide fire a million dollars, uh, in '24, '25, 966, in '25, '26, and 924, in '26, '27 as a baseline for all of these agencies, and would provide Star Ambulance with 137,000 each year for the next three years.
And that, actually, the KMAO ambulance would be 325, not 320, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, so it grew, okay. I'm just, can I, can I, yeah?
Of course, yes.
I mean, we have a motion, but I want to look at this a little bit.
No problem. It's a big decision. None of us take this lightly, for sure. Supervisor Royal, while you're looking at it, is that okay?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I mean, this, this basically means we don't have an active committee, right?
No.
We would still have an active committee?
Absolutely. I, I strongly reject that.
Okay.
Because, and respectfully, Supervisor...
You can, you can reject my ideas, I love it.
Because, for, for lots of reasons. Like I said, there's, the three million dollars in fund balance, sounds like it's still going to be available. Um, your board would want to make a decision to give that to the committee to recommend in '24, '25. It's a large sum of money. In addition, there would be revenue above this 12.5 million dollar projection that would be available for, uh, the committee to recommend. So that, in and of itself, is three, three and a half, maybe 3.7 million dollars that they could recommend, um, in this year, beyond just this baseline allocation, in addition to other policy considerations that the committee could recommend to your board, in addition to holding agencies accountable for the funding that is being awarded through Measure Z.
That's like 15 to 20% of total revenue.
Huge responsibility over the next couple of years.
So I'd be interested in discussing a little bit more, you know, what the role of the committee is, whether we want to say that the committee's role is to make recommendations for the, um...
Three million?
Well, not just the three million, any, like, additional revenues potentially, um, that's one way to consider handling it.
Is that their role now?
Well, right now, I don't think we've defined, I don't think we came to consensus about what we're going to do with, A, the three million dollars, and B, whatever, um, extra is generated in future years. Uh, the three million is rollover, but we already know there, you know, may be salary savings or other related savings from, from, that are rolling forward as well. So that's, I don't think we've given, unless I missed it, I don't think we've given direction about what to do.
I was hoping that could be a second motion.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
Yeah, second.
Great.
Motion separate from this.
Okay.
Important stuff to take care of as well.
But I have one additional question with this motion. So if, um, you know, we're saying that things don't look any worse, and we get that 12.5 million dollars, which I, I, in my mind, is probably, probably what's going to happen, but if something happens, I don't know, and we don't, then, and these are set amounts, do, then we then come back to the board to rediscuss this? How, what's that look like? And I know the recommendations from the Measure Z committee are recommendations, they always come to the board, but these are setting these amounts. And so what if we get another huge, you know, loss of sales tax? And then what happens? Can you answer that?
The, so the Measure Z committee also in May made a, adopted their own stance, and we presented it to the board at, uh, the proposed budget, and your board didn't take a, um, a position on it, but the Measure Z committee is interested in, in establishing a reserve, uh, at 16% of the annual revenues, to sit there and provide for any shortage in funding and revenue that comes each year. So, if you set this 12.5 million dollars as a baseline, and revenue comes in at 12.2 million dollars, there would be a reserve to fund these baseline services, because these are the services that have been established as a priority through the committee and through your board.
Thank you.
Okay, on this particular motion in front of us, which is option two, with the caveat, was there a caveat there? No caveat, it's as, as presented. Supervisor Wilson, final points?
Was there just a need to do an amending motion to attach to this, or are we going to do a separate motion?
We're going to do a separate motion, I think was the thought.
Okay.
Keep things simple. Supervisor Royal?
I just want to comment on the motion in front of us. I will, um, I will support it, um, and I want to just reiterate how important I think MIST is, um, but I understand that there are some alternative revenue streams, and we could always come back to that, uh, discussion later.
So that was the kind of clarification to the motion, is that it wouldn't be discontinued till after June 30th?
It's correct.
So we all clear on the motion?
Of '24, right? Somebody said '24, '25, and I was like, well, it's not...
In '24, June 30th and '25.
June 30th of '24, this fiscal year, thank you.
Yes, exactly. Okay, any last thoughts? Let's go ahead and, uh, vote on this motion, and then we can wrap up discussion on the other item.
Thank you, motion carries 5-0 on that motion.
5-0, thank you very much. Okay, Supervisor Bone has to get on the road, but we're going to carry on with the last part of this discussion and consider, uh, direction that we might provide in regards to other revenues. The three million and/or additional revenues that may or may not show up, et cetera. Uh, with the caveat that the committee has said to us, they'd like to preserve in the account some sort of a buffer or reserve of 16%, which is about three million. Um, out of 15? Actually, it's a little less than that. At any rate, um, how would the board like to proceed on that item? Supervisor Royal, you were seemingly going towards potential motion on that?
I wasn't, um, feeling prepared to make a motion, I'm sorry. I know we're trying to expedite things, but it is tough.
It's okay.
I, I don't want to keep asking people to serve on this committee if there's no role for them, so, and I, I hear you, what you're saying about the accountability piece and the oversight, but, but if, um, you know, if we're, I think we need to redefine the role of that committee. Are they receiving reports from all the funded entities about the effectiveness and making recommendations about efficiency? I don't know. Um, you know, what, what would that accountability look like if it's not, um, related to funding decisions, is, is one question I have, and I'd be interested in, you know, hearing from Glenn with your experience, although, you know, I think we're going in a direction that's different from what you suggested, but, um, you know, I, I also would like to hear whether my colleagues are interested in saying, yes, the Measure Z committee can allocate, you know, um, all of the additional revenue above and beyond that 12 and a half million, or a portion of it. It would probably help define that in the future and keep us from continuing to hit our heads against the wall if we, if we were to define that. Or we could take a wait-and-see approach, but I think we're just going to end up in the same place again.
Supervisor Bushnell?
So I have a question, um, so you, um...
I'll come back.
You would like to see that they do what they currently do and bring recommendations to this board for the additional funding, is that what you're saying?
I think my perspective would be yes, to give them at least a defined percentage or the totality of that additional funding to, to make recommendations about, um, that preserves a meaningful, I think, meaningful role. That funding will be really variable. Right now, we know that there's three million, but, you know, there could be, um, there could be more, there could be less some years. That would still keep a role of deciding about some of the fiscal portion, but then the other question I had was really about, like, what else could they be doing around accountability to help inform and advise us? And I, and I don't know, you know, like, if they can go through and say, how did you spend the money, and, um, you know, was it in line with, you know, now that we're just taking like a fixed approach, I imagine most of these entities will be like, great, this is our budget. So are we, you know, I think the question of what the Measure Z committee's role is also transfers to what is the role of the recipients in providing data and information about how the money was spent? Like, do we still want them to say, here's, you know, here is how we're planning to spend the money, and for there to be some kind of iterative process there?
So I, I understand that somewhat, because I anticipate that there will be monies over the 12.4 million, and that would be the role of the, um, committee to bring recommendations to the board for that overage, unless we're saying we're not going to do that, you know, for the next three years, that we can have a savings. But I, I do think that one thing I've heard from the Measure Z committee a lot is that the Measure Z has gotten passed around from Alicia to Sean to whoever has time to do it. There's no dedicated person, um, to, to do that, and maybe it's not a full-time person, but I know it's a heavy lift for Sean right now, additionally with his job. And when they've asked questions, and I'm not saying you haven't answered, I'm, I'm trying to make a point here, is that we don't have staff that works solely on Measure Z, and so to get the information that the Measure Z committee has asked for in the past has somewhat been difficult and a heavy lift for staff members that are, already have jobs, and this Measure Z gets, you know, passed on to them. And I know in the past, we've talked about trying to have, you know, even a half-time person, I don't want to, you know, talking about jobs here, and that's something we just talked about not doing. But I also have heard from fire that having an, an advocated person, or a person that could advocate for them, or say, you know, this is where we see the best, you know, spent monies, or this, um, position for a, um, you know, a grant, or so forth and so on. They don't have that person, there's not a dedicated person. And so I think it becomes difficult when we want to talk about the committee, but we don't have anybody to do the work that really needs to surround those monies and that, and that kind of commitment that the Measure Z wants. And my second thought for the three million dollars, I... And my second thought for the 3 million dollars, I understand savings, and I think that's super important. However, I do know that this board said if there was monies to come back, that we would try to fund up some of the, the, the amounts we gave that we really decreased, one of those being FIRE. And, you know, they, they got enough money to do dispatch, dispatch, and that's pretty much where that money went this year. So I just want to also remind this board that we did make a commitment to look at those partial fundings that we did when we allocated Measure Z.
Yeah, thank you for that. Sean?
Two things. It sounds like your board could make a decision today on what to do with this funding at mid-year, because typically when there's funding available at mid-year, we report that to your board, then your board goes down through the rankings list and awards funding for those projects, or like you said, it awards funding for projects that have been reduced. So your board can take that action and say, hey, we want to make sure that we have X amount, million dollars available at mid-year, the rest goes to the committee, something along those lines. Second piece about the committee, the committee, they adopted a suite of recommendations back in May. One of them was what kind of expenses to allow, right? Because there have been, looking back at some of these applications, there have been questions about should this be an allowable cost? We're going to review some of those things actually on Thursday. And so even with these set allocations, my ID, my, I see that these agencies would still, Kamau would still need to submit a proposal to the committee, and the committee would say, yes, these are within the spirit of Measure Z, these things are all allowable per our guidelines. And so that is one valuable thing that the committee can do, is to ensure that the funding that is going there to these agencies is actually spent on expenses that are important to the committee and this board.
Thank you for that. And I, you know, it's, it's the 3 million, it's other monies that may not have been spent this year, and it's where are we at for '24, '25 in terms of revenue from '23, '24? We will have a first quarter report in January. I'm assuming we'll have a second quarter report available like the mid, I mean, that's sort of, that's the middle of the year, but we only have our first quarter report at that point.
First quarter is coming December 19th, excuse me through the chair.
Fantastic, so that's pretty soon.
Yeah, and then mid-year comes in early February.
In early February. So at that point, we're going to have a better sense of where we're at with sales tax, it's still only a half year, but we're going to have a better sense. Is it 12 and a half million? Is it 14? What is it? So all of those items become funds that we're going to want to get input from the committee, you know, to help decide how those should be, best be spent. At least that's my opinion. There was some suggestion that we might provide direction on how those monies might get spent, but I don't want to see us lose the value of this committee, as was said by others here today. I think that is a huge piece of why the voters supported this, and I think we have to be super attentive to that and not just think that we, as a board, know what the best thing is to do and start allocating out this money. So I want to make sure, I, I would like to make sure that we keep all that together for the committee, because they're going to start meeting intensively in March, and they come up with the recommendations in May. And I think also after you speak, I want to ask Glenn to come back up and give us your thoughts on what you've heard here on this second conversation.
I, I wanted to clarify with counsel, do we need a public comment on this portion of it, or is that on the 3 million, or is that included with the entire item?
I believe the public comment was, was for the entirety of the item, including the 3 million dollars.
Good question.
Okay. So my comment would be that I would prefer to have this money come back at mid-year, like we do it with recommendations from the committee possibly, but also public safety money doesn't do any good sitting in an account. It doesn't work for public safety. And I just want to, you know, make that comment as well. The voters think the money's going for public safety, and I understand the savings portion so that we can keep funding for three years, but I think we could have a smaller amount in a savings to do the allocations that we did. And I just would really advocate for coming back at mid-year and having this discussion then like we normally do with the committee's thoughts.
Thoughts from the other board members on, on that? Supervisor Wilson?
I appreciate where this conversation is going with relationship to making sure that we have funding with relationship to the, to the committee. I want to say that I don't want the committee relegated to be an audit committee. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, I don't, I think that that is not what I want to see happen, that it's just like, oh, well, they're just going to audit all the things that people did. And I, we have auditors for that, and I don't want to necessarily, I don't, I don't think that's probably the, the best use of our citizen, you know, will and firepower with relationship to these issues. So, and also, I don't mind that some money sits for a while while we reallocate and see what's going on, and, and I think having fund balances actually does matter. I, I do understand that with relationship to public safety, there's, there's, I appreciate the, you know, the anxiety around, like, if you have money in the bank, you should be spending on public safety, because at any one moment, no one feels safe enough, I guess. And, but that's, that anxiety is going to be forever. What happens when you spend all the money is then you are still feeling unsafe and you have no money. So let's, let's try and figure out a way that we do, that we, that we do retain some funding with relationship to some reserve as much as possible to, to be able to deal with things as they come. So from, from my perspective, holding that 3 million dollars for that, for that at least the six months before we get to this next phase is important to me. I'm not sure we need to vote on this. This seems like just sort of like a discussion and recommendation, so.
I agree with that. Yep, let's ask Mr. Zeimer to come back up and just give us your thoughts.
I, I'm trying to temper myself because I want to seem reasonable, and frankly, right now, I, I don't feel very reasonable. When I first read the staff report on Friday, I was reminded of the old adage that I think quoted, or, you know, referred to Mr. Emerson, and it is that, what you do speaks so loudly I can't hear what you say. And what I mean by that, your board has adopted, six months ago, some targets for this fund. Similarly, our committee, more than six months ago, developed what Sean characterized, I think fairly, as a fairly detailed suite of recommendations. And when I read through the staff report, I was stunned by the fact that there was no effort of any kind, not a single word, that tried to outline for you what the option would be if you were to pursue your own goal. Similarly, I was stunned that there was not a single word that go, went to the fact of what, what would you have to do to try to meet the committee's goals? If I was the decision-maker and I had established a, a bar or a target, and a, a topic of that matter came to my attention, I would expect that the staff report would identify the steps I would have to take to meet my own goal, or your own goal in this case. The staff report does none of that. I, I'm sorry if this sounds cynical, but what you have been presented with is essentially an effort to steer you into a specific direction. The choices and the variance between option one, two, and three are essentially immaterial. So what you've been presented with is not a neutral staff report that tries to bring to your attention what steps you would have to take, were you to want to retain the status quo, what steps you would have to take if you wanted to try to approach the goal that you yourselves have set, and what you would have to take to meet the goal outlined by the committee. So the idea that the committee is still going to be valuable when 100 percent of the money is pre-allocated is an absolute joke. Yeah, we can, we can tinker with $20,000 or $30,000. In the own, in the county's own document, there's actually a negative amount in the current year, so there is no discretionary capability on the part of the committee, and the staff knows that. And I'm discouraged that they would sit here and pretend otherwise in front of you. I, I've had a good relationship with Ms. Hayes and Mr. Quincy, and I've always considered them to be honest and above board, and I'm quite frankly reconsidering that circumstance right now. I am thoroughly dismayed, and I can assure you, the, the majority of the committee will be thoroughly dismayed by the fact that they chose not even present options to you that would allow you to reach either your goal or our goal. Maybe our goal is, you know, pie in the sky and unreasonable. Your goal was certainly attainable, but they put not one ounce of effort into driving, trying to even illustrate for you what that would look like, and instead gave you a option list that essentially is no options whatsoever. So, you know, they can assert that committee will have all kinds of value under the proposal that you voted to accept, and the fact of the matter is that that's a joke. It'll be a Kabuki theater.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, so that leaves us in an interesting place to end our day. Supervisor Royal?
Well, I'd like to thank you for telling it like it is, and I, I think, you know, we've already taken our vote on the, on the allocations for the bulk of the money. You're absolutely right, and our goal was 70 percent, and, you know, 30 percent, and we've, we've, we're looking at something that's really 100 percent of the dollars, but within that, you know, 87-ish percent going to, to county ongoing expenses by the end of this, you know, three-year cycle. So I think it's fair, fair feedback and really direct. That said, you know, what I was, I don't think we need to make a decision necessarily today, but I would ask that if there's feedback that you have later, or that other committee members have, or other members of the public about what the value is and how there might be sideboards around any additional revenues in Measure Z slash O, I'd be interested to hear it, because this is something I still, you know, in the absence of a clear direction from our board and a clear mandate for the committee, I can anticipate that, seeing the numbers, there's already a shortfall. I can anticipate what's going to happen with the money and knowing what our needs are with roads that are not yet met by other revenue streams. So I, I can kind of foresee that we will feel immense pressure in the very near future to spend these funds if we don't come up with a direction. So I, I don't think we need to do that today, but I would suggest to my board that we make a decision to do it fairly soon, and that we take a little bit more time to get input and to talk with, you know, our committee appointees, et cetera, to get some, some input.
Sup, yeah, counsel?
Based on the information that's been provided in the last few minutes, I would suggest that there would be a motion to bring back this matter at a time certain.
To bring back the issue of?
To direct staff to bring back the issue of the, the remaining fund balance and the other issues that have been discussed.
Okay, so that's a recommendation for a motion. Supervisor Royal?
Yeah, well, so the Measure Z committee is meeting Thursday, and I'm sure that'll be an interesting discussion. I'd like to give the opportunity for that to happen, then we have, you know, obvious holiday season stuff. I would say we, the, the challenge for picking a time certain is that we don't have our schedule for meetings in 2024, but is there a date in January, later in the month, when we feel sure that we will be meeting that I could propose in my motion?
Yes, we will propose your board meet on the 9th, the 23rd, and the 30th.
Okay. I would like to know if staff feel that the 23rd would be enough time?
Of January?
Of January. Or, or staff and board? I, I want to make sure staff felt like they could bring it back, then. Do you all feel that that would be enough time?
I, I'm wondering, the, first of all, if there is a response or, from staff, or if we're going to wait until that meeting to get a response, because I am a little confused as well now. And I do want to thank Glenn, you know, you very frank and to the point, and, but I would like staff to be able to respond to that before we make a motion, or make a motion, make a second, and have discussion, either ways, whatever the chair prefers.
So one is we have a suggestion for a motion to bring this back for, for the discussion about the remaining revenues and other possible revenues. But I'd like to ask Glenn to come back up, if you could please, Glenn. Thank you also for the directness. If I'm understanding correctly, I mean, would this be what you had hoped might happen? And that is that we set parameters around fixed costs versus discretionary costs at some percentage basis, rather than what we just did was set certain expectations for the funding for the next three years, fixed amounts, and because we're in a low-revenue state right now on sales tax, that's using up most of the money, right? But if we in fact did what you have recommended in the past, and I have in others, that we had a fixed set of accounts where we said, it doesn't matter what the revenue stream is for that year, we're going to work within a 70 percent for fixed costs for the county and 30 percent for discretionary, and maintain those proportions regardless of what the revenue stream is. Is that the kind of thing you were hoping we might have done?
A couple of things. First of all, let me say, I want to reemphasize that despite my emotionality or passion, or whatever you want to call it, I, I fully recognize and respect the fact that we are an advisory, advisory committee. That in fact is in our name, and I, I will always be an advocate for a position that I feel powerfully about, but I do understand and rec, and recognize that this is a decision that you are empowered to make, and we are only in a position to make advice to you. Having said that, I, I think there's an obligation to have an honest discussion about the options, and, and that's where my frustration comes today, because quite frankly, this wasn't an honest discussion about the options. This was an effort to get you to go a certain direction. And I, I understand that the CAO's job and Sean's job is difficult, because they're, they're required to take a very complex topic, and this is probably as complex as it can get, because it talks about sociology, it talks about finance, it talks about, you know, constituencies and so on. So it combines all the most complex elements of the whole political process, and in a short period of time, they have the obligation to come to you and try to distill all that down into three or four pages. And I recognize and I appreciate honestly the difficulty of that. But overarching that is the responsibility, I think, to, like I said, promote an honest discussion about a range of options. And the discussion today didn't have a range of options. It had an option that had one little carrot in option A, and a different little carrot in option B, and a, and a third carrot in option C. But if you look at the substance of them, and when I'm talking about substance, if you look at the county's own spreadsheet, there is no material difference in any of these, in, in a real sense of the word. And that's where my frustration is. As far as what, you know, what I would like to see as an individual committee member, quite frankly, doesn't matter. I, I can scream and yell at the top of my voice, and who cares? And when I walk out of this room, I recognize that. But I, I have a passion about it, because I think that it's been successful for one fundamental reason, and that is the committee has approached this honestly and openly with the community. We've made the best recommendations we could with the information we had, and then we've lived with the consequences when, when those decisions turned out maybe not to be optimal. And I, I think the people recognize that, and those of you who have spoken to the political aspect of it, recognize that the value of the committee isn't of the committee itself, but it gives the people some sense that there's some control, and they just didn't vote this money, and then it just goes off into the ether somewhere. And we're losing that. We're losing that in a big way, and, and I think that's sad. So I'm sorry if my emotionality colors this discussion, because that's not my goal. My, my goal and my desire would have been to have an open, honest, wide-ranging discussion about all the options available to you, and I'm simply frustrated that that didn't happen.
And so like I said, a 70-30 split is a different type of an option, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it, like I said, I, I'm fully aware that what I say doesn't really matter. What the committee has said is we should have a goal, we didn't expect you to accomplish it immediately, because we knew that that would be impossible. But to not even consider, not have one word in the staff report that addresses your own goal or our own goal, it is professional malfeasance, that's all it is.
All right, thank you so much. We won't belabor that any further, but Sean, I know you'd like to respond.
Actually, can I respond to that, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
CAO Hayes?
I, I've, I always appreciate your exuberance around this topic, Glenn, but I just, I, I want to remind everybody...
I want to remind everybody that the staff report is a product of an ad hoc that spent many, many hours chewing on this conversation, and it, this isn't an easy topic. Where do we cut? Do we cut fire? Do we cut behavioral health services? Do we cut law enforcement? We don't want to cut any of that. And, and, and it is an emotional conversation because we don't, we want to serve our community as the best we can, and when we have to limit any of those services, we feel personally responsible for that. So yes, Glenn is absolutely right, this, this staff report doesn't get to what the goal was because that goal was not palatable for us in those conversations. And so the staff report is written in a way to try to drive the board as a body in a direction that we felt would be palatable based off of the conversations that we had with the ad hocs. So I just want to be very clear that this is not Sean's manipulation, or my manipulation, of a direction of where we think you should go in this conversation, that this was trying to get you to the most copacetic position we could find for all five board members.
Supervisor Wilson and Bushnell?
Yeah, and not to jump on the sword, but I will at this moment, this is a product of the, of the ad hoc committee. So if the ad hoc committee took, I guess, the, the privilege of, of, of distilling down those conversations, we could take responsibility for that. And I do agree with the criticism of the ad hoc committee as put forward, that I, when I was looking at this today, although I didn't look at it before, it was like, it did dawn on me like, oh, wait a minute, like it didn't have what was the, what was, what were those numbers? But then, of course, I don't even know we would even grok that, those, those, the implications of those, and we moved past that. And if that's a criticism of this committee, then I'm really, I'm willing to accept it. We're barely able to, you know, move past what's in what we have in front of us right now. And, and that's just the way, I mean, I, there's, I, I think that, I think that the role of the committee was to try and narrow this down to something that we felt like there was a range of palatability. If we didn't hit it right and we need to come back to do that again, I'm willing to do that. I think it's, it's reasonable, but, but the problem is, is like, even this was hard. So I'm not sure, clear that, I'm not clear that the board as a whole has an appetite to go back necessarily, but I'm willing to, to do that in a future date, I just don't think we need to do that today. So that's just my two cents on this.
And Supervisor Bushnell, and I see Sean has answered up too?
Well, my comment was going to be where CAO went and where Supervisor Wilson went. This is a product of the ad hoc, and it was difficult, and we set, I don't know how many meetings and limited them, you know, to try to not exhaust ourselves in those meetings, went over every single time, and met with the sheriff, and met with Connie, and met with, you know, people that it would truly affect. I, I do think maybe looking back now, we should have included a, a Measure Z committee member. We had the first talk with the Measure Z ad hoc the first time, and it's, it is a difficult discussion, and trying to find common ground and commonality with the board so that we could get to a motion. We're on, you know, that was also in the, around the minds of the ad hoc. And so I appreciate, Glenn, as always, your feelings and your passion for, and I do think it's passion, for what your job is as Measure Z committee, and, but it is a product of not just the CEO's office.
So, yeah, Sean, go ahead.
Thank you. Couple things I need to say. The, to your point Supervisor Bushnell, the Measure Z committee voted as a whole to have their ad hoc committee stop doing their work. They provided recommendations to their own committee which were forwarded to your board. So that was a decision of that committee to discontinue that work from that point. On the funding question, the Measure Z committee's recommendation to your board is to hit 67% of all available funding by fiscal year '26, '27. The action that your board took today hits that number this year in '24, '25. If you reserve that $3 million in fund balance to be allocated by the committee in '24, '25, that will hit $15.5 million. If you look at the spreadsheet, that hits that number two years ahead of time. That is meeting the committee's charge, their recommendation to your board, two years ahead of time.
Yeah, no, I was going to just point out the very first paragraph of our discussion in our staff report where it talks about the ad hoc, and it says they were tasked to return to your board with a percentage-based methodology for Measure Z with an ultimate goal of setting county allocations at no more than 80% of ongoing funding, 70% of available funding. And if we had $15 million in revenue this year, we'd be there this year as well, and next year. So, I mean, a lot of this is the difficulty of the fact that our revenues went way down. So with that, I think we do have direction to the, the staff to come back with a mid-year report and recommendations, was that what I was hearing as a recommendation to?
Some need a week's motion.
That's right, County Council suggested a motion for this, so.
Or, yeah, County Council suggested that we set it for a date certain. So I would, I'll move that we bring this item back, the item being the remainder of rollover funds and unspent funds in Measure Z and how to handle that, and the role of the Measure Z, redefining the role of the Measure Z slash O committee on January 23rd, 2024.
Considering redefining the role, right?
23rd, it's our third meeting.
I'll second that motion, and also I do want to recognize that now, when you said that, I did ask why the Measure Z committee wasn't involved, and you said they opted not to. And so thanks for reminding me of that. And I'll second that motion to have that discussion, but could I ask staff, is that going to be a problem before mid-year, or we know for sure that those are the funds that we have? I mean, truthfully speaking, that's a really brutal time for us because we're preparing to kick off the budget while preparing mid-year simultaneously this year, you know, we're putting a lot of pressure on departments and particularly internal service funds, multiple of which fall under my purview, to have very precise numbers so that we can do very good estimations for next year to, to dial your board in on, on the '24, '25 budget well. A lot of this is, you know, sort of concurrently running together, so it bumps the Measure Z up a little bit. I, I mean, I think we can, we can pull it off. I do wonder if the, if the conversation around, you know, allocating the Measure Z funds is pertinent to have in the full context of the general fund, and so that might be something for your board to consider if you, you want to sort of have that full picture of where the general fund is as, as you make those considerations.
County Council, I see you're looking to prepare to say something?
Well, when I said a time certain, it doesn't need to necessarily be a date, a specific date. It can be.
You're saying to come back?
It could be a time after mid-year or in the month of February, et cetera.
So are we comfortable with amending the motion to allow staff to come up with the best date to come back to us?
I see.
And make it a time certain item?
I see Deputy Cao, Ms. Yel, has her hand up, is that okay?
That's great.
I just wanted to clarify if we were going, if the point of the 23rd was to clarify policy and not to do any allocation, because the preference would be to do any allocation at the mid-year.
Right.
I, I think policy was my intent. I will say, I, there are pros and cons to including this conversation with our entire budget conversation, I think that will change the outcome. I, you know, I think, I would love to be able to continue the conversation about the spirit and the, the spirit of and the role of the Measure Z O committee as its own item. And I, I think I'm kind of expecting that folks can read between the lines there, I think otherwise it will be much more difficult to go the direction of having the measure, the committee allocate funds, I'll just be frank. Great, so it'd be great if you returned in January.
So that's an amended motion then, with, to come back in January?
Oh, not, not, not on the 23rd, just in January?
Yep.
The seconders, okay with that?
Okay, any final discussion on that? All right, let's do a roll call, please.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I had to mark Supervisor Bowden. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Medron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 4-0.
Thank you all for your participation, we are adjourned.